A call to order the meeting of the Willsville City Council for June 2, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Here.
Counselor Schevelin?
Here.
Counselor Barry, or Counselor President Barry?
Here.
Counselor Cunningham?
Here.
Counselor Dunwell?
Here.
Mayor O’Neil?
Here. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unredone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Counselor President Barry can have a motion to approve the following order of agenda.
I move to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
I’ll second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Good evening, everyone. I hope you that everyone had a wonderful weekend. Since our last city council meeting on May 19, I would like to update the council and the community on a number of items. First, for those who may not be aware, Willsville has joined a national coalition of cities, counties, and transit agencies in filing a federal lawsuit against the Trump administration. At stake are millions in federal grants to support vital services, including public transit and homelessness assistance, which are now under threat due to unlawful changes imposed without congressional approval. The lawsuit filed in U.S. District Court for the Western District of Washington challenges new conditions added by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD, and the Department of Transportation. These changes require local governments to make legal promises that conflict with state and local laws, putting cities like Wilsonville in an impossible position. The core issue: Federal agencies can’t change the rules of a grant program midstream without Congress signing off. But that’s exactly what happened. New mandates covering issues like immigration enforcement, health care, and equity initiatives were added retroactively to grant agreements, including those funding our smart transit services. These conditions are not only unconstitutional, they would undermine our ability to serve Wilsonville residents. For example, complying with federal immigration enforcement requirements would violate Oregon state law, leaving the city legally exposed on both sides. If we comply, we risk state lawsuits; if we don’t, we could be forced to repay three times the amount of our transit grants. Either way, our community loses. That’s why on May 21, Willsville stood up, not just for our city, but for the principle that local governments should not be coerced into unlawful agreements. Thanks to our city attorney, Amanda Gail Hinman, and her team, we joined this lawsuit to defend the rule of law, protect our community services, and ensure that local decisions stay local. Next, I would like to note a few dates of observance that the city’s Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee has advanced for the month of June. First off, I wish everyone a happy Pride Month. Pride Month commemorates a legacy of resilience and progress of civil rights for all members of our community. In 1999, President Bill Clinton marked the anniversary of the Stonewall riots as Gay and Lesbian Pride Month. Later, this declaration was expanded by President Barack Obama in 2011 to include the full spectrum of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual individuals and many others whom collectively are known also as the LTP/TTQ+ community. The Pride movement embodies solidarity, collective identity, and resistance to discrimination and violence. I would also like to note that this Saturday, June 7, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, the city is hosting a Pride celebration and mural reception at Town Center Park. This free, family-friendly event is an opportunity to celebrate Pride Month in Willsville and connect with community. Attendees can pick up a new Pride pin designed by a Willsville High School student, which is pretty neat. The event showcases a Pride mural designed and painted by Darren and Todd on the windows of the Parks and Rec Administrative Building. The event also features Speaker Robin Will, music provided by—I’m going to get this wrong—DJ SM4SH. Is that how we say it?
Smash.
Smash, okay, okay. I’m sorry, I’m not that hip, okay? There’s a four there that throws me. Tie dyeing of clothes, face painting, storytime led by the Willsville Public Library staff, and food carts available for purchase. The event is sponsored by the city’s Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee and the Arts Culture and Heritage Commission. During June, we also celebrate Immigrant Heritage Month. Immigrant Heritage Month was launched in 2014 to celebrate immigrants and their contributions to the United States. Willsville embraces the rich diversity and cultural contributions of immigrants who have made our city vibrant and dynamic. Willsville’s history includes immigrants from various parts of the world. This also is an opportunity for Americans to explore their own heritage and celebrate the shared diversity that forms the unique story of America’s history and democracy. Over the past two weeks, I have participated in a number of meetings and events with local area elected officials and community members. On May 20, I participated in the Beckman Bridge ribbon cutting and opening with other city council members, school district leaders, and community members to celebrate the completion of the new bridge over the Beckman Creek Dip. The new bridge provides a safer route for drivers and pedestrians with clear line of sight that has been missing when the road dipped way down to the creek and back up. With the nearby Frog Pond Primary School opening next year, Meridian Creek Middle School right down the road, along with all of the new residential developments in the Frog Pond area, the Beckman Creek Bridge was a necessary infrastructure improvement. With that being said, the highlight of the grand opening, I believe, was a ride on new electric, all-weather trolley that replaced the old one that went out of service years ago. It was a huge hit with both the adults and kids alike that came to the opening. On May 21, I was honored to participate in the official ribbon-cutting event with the Willsville Area Chamber of Commerce at the newly opened Elkabees Restaurant and Town Center Shopping Center. If you not had the chance to check it out, this new dining option, I encourage you to do so. They’re already exceeding the business expectations. Their lines are full, so keep supporting that business. On May 22, I attended the May Meeting of the Metropolitan Mayor’s Consortium. This association of two dozen Portland-area mayors meets monthly to discuss regional issues of concern and hear legislative updates. We heard a report from former Congressman Earl Blumenar and the Director of the Portland Institute for Metropolitan Studies and how this organization could help local governments. We also discussed several bills at the legislature, which is now in the wind-down phase of the legislative session. On May 23, I attended the Southeast Washington County Mayor’s Lunch hosted by Twalde Mayor Frank Lubinek, which included mayors from Sherwood, King City, and Durham, along with Washington County Commissioner Jason Snyder. While our cities vary quite a bit, we also share many common issues such as infrastructure funding. We also share state legislatures, including our state representative and state senator. For those who are not aware, former Representative Courtney Neuron-Missland has now assumed the position of State Senator for Senate District 13, formerly held by Senator Aaron Woods, who passed away in April. Her replacement for representative will be decided this Friday, I believe. On Memorial Day, I, along with City Council President Barry, had the honor of participating in the Memorial Day observance ceremony held at the Oregon-Korean Memorial, hosted by the leaders of the Korea War Veterans Association and Korea War Memorial Foundation of Oregon. It was a very moving experience. The timing of the flyover by the military and when the speeches ended was just impeccable. I don’t think we’ve ever—I’ve ever seen that before. On May 28, the city hosted, and I attended Congresswoman Andrea Salinas’s Congressional Field Hearing on Mental Health and the impact in proposed federal cuts in funding and mental health resources for those in need, including our youth. Afterwards, Congresswoman Salinas and I toured local small businesses with Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Kevin O’Malley, Chamber Board of Director member Patrick McDonaldson, and City Economic Development Manager Matt Lorenzen. This walking tour and meeting with small business owners provided a great opportunity to showcase our local businesses, the city’s economic development efforts, and discuss how current issues at the federal level, such as terrorists and immigration issues, are impacting these local businesses. There are upcoming meetings. I’ll just summarize it. In terms of an upcoming community event, I’d like to note that Oregon Tech is welcoming Willsville community members to attend the college’s Idea Fest this Wednesday, June 4, from 4:00 to 6:30 PM. This annual event provides an opportunity for juniors, seniors, and graduate students to present their capstone research, thesis, and other class projects. Idea Fest includes project posters and demonstrations from students in computer science, electrical engineering, manufacturing, and mechanical engineering, and renewable energy engineering. OIT invites prospective students and other guests to attend for an up-close look at highly inventive and innovative projects Oregon Tech students are creating. For more information on all of these events and more, please see the city’s website, willsilloregon.gov. And I’ll be attending the usual several meetings I have each month, and I won’t go through those. Our next city council meeting—the last item to note—is it’s on Monday, June 16, starting at 7:00 PM. Our next agenda item is a presentation by the city’s Arts, Culture, and Heritage Coordinating—excuse me—Coordinator Erica Valentine about the Hearts of Willsville
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I’m Erica Valentine. I’m the city’s Arts and Culture Program Coordinator. I work in the Parks and Rec Department. I’m here this evening to talk about the Hearts of Willsville Many Cultures One Heart Public Art Project. This project was funded through the Willsville Metro Community Enhancement Grant, and part of those grant guidelines say that we return back to council once the project is completed to sort of give an update. So just a very high-level overview of how the project came to be. So I brought the Arts, Culture, Heritage Commission, or ACHC, several project options kind of of similar scales that could potentially be funded through this grant. That was November of 2023. The commission favored this fiberglass hearts project, so includes 10 fiberglass hearts. They’re about four feet wide and five feet tall. They’re to be painted by local artists. The grant presentations took place in February of 2024, and then the funding was received in July of 2024. So the budget through the grant—so each artist received a stipend of $1,350, and there were 10 artists for the 10 hearts. And then there was the cost of the hearts themselves. Each heart was $1,350 as well, and then a shipping cost to get the 10 hearts here. There were some other minimal expenses for the project that were just covered by the general fund, so things like the bases—which you can see in that photo—materials for that, some signage. Each heart has a sign that has the artist’s name, title of the heart, and there’s a QR code to take you to the city’s public art page, as well as some supplies for the reception event. Some background and process of the project. So I wrote a call-for-art application, and the theme was “Many Cultures One Heart.” This theme came about because it’s kind of highlighted in the ACHC’s priorities to increase programming around cultural diversity. It’s also mentioned in the city’s Arts, Culture, Heritage Strategy, which is kind of the framework for the work that I’m doing, as well as the commission. It was brought to the ACHC for their feedback in August of 2024. It was issued in September and then due in November. This image here is just a screenshot from one of the artists’ applications. So I just wanted to show what was included in the application, so the artists had to show kind of their plan for the design on the front as well as the back. And now that the hearts are installed, it’s just kind of fun looking back to how their mock-up sketch kind of translated to the hearts, so I have a couple of those pictures in here. With the call-for-art application, we received 29 designs by 20 artists. Artists were allowed to submit multiple designs if they wanted. There was an internal review, and we determined the strongest 18 applications. Those then got forwarded on to the ACHC, and we also had two members from DEI join us for that process. Anytime the ACHC is choosing artists or artwork, it’s a similar process, but they receive all the materials ahead of time. They go through a scoring process that they do individually prior to coming as a group for their public meeting. I collect the scores to then have at the meeting in order, in ranked order, so they can see that. And then they go through a discussion process to then come to a motion and a vote on which artists they were going to award these hearts to. So they were looking at the artist’s previous body of work. So in the application, the artists had to also submit images of past work that they’ve done, their design aesthetic, artist excellence, and then looking at their design, so the originality of the design, and then the connection to the theme. So the process, once we determined the 10 artists, they were all notified. They all received their contracts. The Parks Maintenance Team built these bases, so I really want to extend thanks to them. I was able to show them a photo and kind of what I thought would make sense, and then they just went and built it. So that was really great to keep the entire project internal. The artists picked up their hearts in January, and then they were due back in April. The Parks Maintenance Team also helped with that, so bringing the hearts out of storage for the artists to take and then putting them back. So I really wouldn’t have been able to do it without them, because I can’t lift one of the hearts at all. They also installed all the signage for me, so each heart has a metal sign, so they installed those as well. The 10 hearts are installed throughout the city, so all on city property, either outside city facilities or in city parks. And then our marketing team were also super helpful in creating this map, so it shows all 10 hearts with the location, artist’s name, title, and that map is printed in our facilities as well as online. They also—the marketing team also went above and beyond. They visited multiple artists’ studios and home spaces where they were doing the work to take photos of the hearts in progress. They also filmed short video clips of the artists talking about the project, some challenges, their design, their theme, and then all those were posted on the city’s social media. The image on the right, just want to point out that is Willsville High School art teacher Angela Escobar. That heart is particularly special just because she was able to work with the high school art students. So it was a big effort between her and the students, and that one is just across the street near the police department. We held a opening reception event on April 30. It was a great opportunity for everyone to see the hearts all together before they got installed. Several of the artists were in attendance, and it was just a great kind of event, bringing the community together. The 10 hearts were actually installed the very next day after the reception, I think before lunchtime, so all 10. And again, thanks to the Parks Maintenance Team, I got to just meet them at the locations and tell them where to put it, and then they handled everything. So I was really appreciative of that. It’s not, I guess, normal Parks work, but they were really excited, and so just want to really thank them. A couple other things now that the hearts are installed. We’ve gotten a lot of input. I printed one email that I just wanted to read, because I think it just kind of sums up kind of the intent of the project. It’s been really well-received. I’ve seen a lot of posts, social media, people taking photos with the hearts. So this email it says, “In my two decades of living in Willsville, I’ve never had cause to contact the city. I simply wanted to express my deep appreciation for the heart sculptures and their profound meaning. My mornings can be challenging, but seeing those hearts always brightens my day. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to everyone involved in this project, including the artists.” So I thought that was really nice to read. And then some—couple other upcoming things. Smart reached out to coordinate a community bike ride. It will be about an eight-mile loop, and that will be July 19, so we’ll have more information on the website, but Smart is kind of putting that on. And then as far as after the installation, the plan is to utilize an online auction portal to auction some of the hearts off. I haven’t committed to a specific date just because we haven’t had the hearts in Willsville yet. We want to kind of see how they hold up in the weather, but the hope is that they are out for the entire community six months to a year. The city may opt to keep a couple of them, just part of the city’s public art collection, but I’ll get input from the ACHC on kind of how they want to handle that. But if people are interested in the auction, I would just recommend following the Parks and Rec social media pages, because that’s kind of where we would advertise that that is happening. So that’s just sort of an overview, but I’m happy to take any questions or feedback on the project.
I’ll just say, from my perspective, it was a home run.
Thank you.
Yeah, I’ve heard—I think, you know, there are things that our community may disagree on, but this one, all I’ve heard about is universal appreciation for the hearts, and I can’t wait about the auction, because I’m just—I think that auction is going to be a pretty well-focused auction with a lot of participants. And the money from that auction would go to—back to the arts?
Yeah, the—any revenue generated from that would just go back to the general fund to offset the cost of future arts and culture programs.
That’s excellent. Anybody else? Yeah?
Thank you for your presentation. That was really nice. I’ve also only received positive feedback on it, and it’s not often where you go to City Hall or a police station and you see—you’re greeted with a statue of a heart. And to me, that just indicates that Willsville wants everybody to have a feeling of belonging. So thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Yeah? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we’ll now move to community input and announcements portion of the city council meeting agenda. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on any matter concerning city business or any matter over which the council has control. It is also the time to address items not on the agenda. It is also the time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for public hearing. Tonight, we have a number of items under the public hearings portion of the agenda, so if your comments are focused on those items, please refrain from speaking during this time and speak during the public comments portion under the public hearings. Staff will make every effort to respond to questions raised during community input as quickly as possible following the council meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Also, please note, you can use the podium or sit at the tables in the front of council, whatever makes you feel more comfortable. Please make sure you talk into the microphone at either location. To comment before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room or by using the raise-hand feature in Zoom. You will need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council’s webpage, As a reminder, when you begin your comments, state your name for the record and state your address, or state that your address is provided on the speaker card. Please note that this is not the only way to communicate with council or me. You’re welcome to submit information via writing or via email. Additionally, I encourage you to schedule a meeting with me or any of the other councillors to discuss your concerns further. And tonight, we have a lot of people that likely will participate and will speak, and so I’d like us to consider holding off on applause to allow everybody to get through and so we can save time. Otherwise, it could be a very late meeting. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Okay. Great.
Good evening. You have my information on file. I have some kudos to share tonight. Nancy Cutler, who most people know as the person who plants the daffodils at the park at Maryfield, has made some recent additions, and I’ve given you photos somewhere of what I’m talking about. The first is a free little art gallery. My husband and I designed this far front lawn to match our house, and it’s essentially like a free—little free library, only art is exchanged instead of books. My HOA didn’t approve it, which I pretty much expected, so I gave it to Nancy Cutler, who erected it at the end of the Arrowhead Creek Trail in Graham Oaks, which is right where the park at Maryfield starts. I encourage everyone to go down that trail and see it. Kit Whittaker, who’s a former member of the Arts Council, just installed this month’s exhibit. It’s on bluebirds, and it’s really beautiful. It’s educational. And next month, someone’s going to be installing a seashore exhibit, and in August, I will be installing an exhibit about Graham Oaks. So if you continue down that path where the daffodils would be, and you turn the corner headed toward the junior high, you’ll see what looks like an art installation of a payphone with a bench. Nancy cleared this area herself, leveled it, and built an installation which is called a phone of the wind. These were first conceived in Japan after a gentleman lost his cousin and felt he hadn’t said inadequate goodbye. So he built a phone booth with a receiver he could talk into, but since it’s connected to nothing, his words went into the wind. Now these phones exist all across the United States and have been a huge assist for people who are grieving. There’s an explanation on the phone of what it is, the phone of the wind, and it’s gotten so much use and positive feedback already. It’s really a wonderful thing. If you continue on that path, past the playground in the park at Maryfield, and as you head toward the street, if you’ll notice on the right, there’s a lot of beautiful new landscaping, which Nancy has planted at her own expense. And on the left, there are nine new spherical sculptures that Nancy and her brother have just constructed, and they’ve installed. Maybe the Boones Ferry Messenger could highlight these projects, so citizens would know about them and visit them. And some people have never actually been to Graham Oaks, and they don’t know that you can enter from Vilboe on Costa Circle East to walk to Maryfield that way, or from Camelot Street, instead of taking it the long way from the Willsville Road entrance. One more kudo—it’s been mentioned tonight—Elkabees Coffee Shop. It’s fabulous. It’s busy all the time, and it’s really just what Willsville needed. And that’s why we need the Town Center Plan, so we can have more businesses like Elkabees, more cafes of that caliber, more shops, what the Town Center Plan will give us, and selfishly—I really want that to happen before I die. So, oops. So, oops, can I have a few more seconds?
Not tonight. Sorry about that.
Just so I can get coffee in the morning, live in an apartment there, a pair of tiffes in the afternoon, quit cooking, and then take the Smart Bus with my little fold-up shopping cart and go to Clackamas Town Center or Oregon City on the shoulder in the bus where there's no traffic.
Thank you, Ms. Reeve. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next individual is Joel Hawkinsmith. I totally mispronounced that last name. I can't, it's hard for me to read or write it. No one? Okay. Bill Bagnone?
We're very busy. I'll be very brief. I also just had something very positive to say, completely unconnected. I had the distinct pleasure of once again volunteering this weekend for the Soul Sisters Run, which is, if you're not familiar with it, it is the women that you see often running on Wilsonville Road Saturday mornings, they're training all year for this run, and it's just for women. And it is absolutely the most amazing event you'll ever volunteer for. Not only is it inspiring because the women are just of every level of run, like I do not run, so I'm admiring all of them, but the camaraderie and the friendship and the sheer joy they get out of this, out of this run. Or walk, you can run, you can walk, you can do whatever you want. But what I wanted to mention was that I was surprised how many women come from other parts of the state, and even Las Vegas. There was a woman from Eugene and two women that came from Astoria. And the nice thing was each of them mentioned that they were so impressed with our paths. I was out by the water treatment plant, so whatever those paths are there, they all commented they really wished their city had those sort of trails and amenities. So I just wanted to thank this council and previous councils that made those sort of things happen, and it was, made me very proud to be a Wilsonvillian. We need, we need a new name for that, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I think that is it for citizens' input. I'll now turn to councillor comments. Lee is on reports and meeting announcements, starting with council president Barry.
Thank you. I thought there'd be a lot more comments. That's it?
They're later.
Oh, okay. So there's a few different things I wanted to talk about tonight. And the first part is I'd like to just, you know, have everybody focus in on what the city council mission statement is, because I think that just states what our purpose is and why we're all here. So I'm going to read it. "To protect and enhance Wilsonville's livability by providing quality service to ensure a safe, attractive, economically vital community while preserving our natural environment and heritage." And so it's not just a mission statement, but it's something that we actually, you know, work on every, every day and every meeting. And so, you know, how do we accomplish our mission? So I just had a few points that our mission, we're planning for not only today but for our future, and that when we plan as, in a city like Wilsonville, which I think is a really well-planned city, we do it in a thoughtful and organized manner. We're working with the city staff, we identify problems that we perceive, and then we review the existing conditions, determine and review options to fix the problem, select that best option, and implement it. And we have some really clear processes that, that includes a lot of people participation. And so it might start with a committee or a task force being appointed, and that the task force or that committee would be made of different representative stakeholders, including residences, business representatives, landowners, public agencies. And then they, they study the issue, and they get lots of input, they have lots of meetings, and they put together a plan that they present to the planning commission. And then the planning commission looks at the issue. This is just a typical, it's not always this way, but mostly. Then the planning commission will review the problem and what the task force has provided. They hold meetings, public hearings, and then they forward what they think would be a good plan to the city council. Then the city council has lots of meetings and discussions, holds public hearings and workshops, and then finally approves it. Part of the process that I'm really, really proud of for the city of Wilsonville is that we really emphasize good information and communications, and we do it in different ways. So we do it through our city's website, through our staff. People can have meetings with staff or contact them by phone or email. The Boones Ferry Messenger is always filled, the newest issues, the June issue, and it's just chock-a-block full of information on all the different happenings in the city that I really recommend that y'all take a look at it. You can get copies over there, you can get it online, down at the library, in your mailbox. We have open meetings for our communications, public meetings in person, and then also access those meetings online through Zoom. So the city just really, really strives hard to provide the best value for each tax dollar as well as all our other city resources. And I just think that's really important, that we all keep that in mind as we debate and try to solve different issues. That, you know, two, two examples that come to mind that everybody's been talking about would be the Town Center and the Smart Transit Programs. Those planning, that planning started way back, probably before 2017, and there were lots of meetings, lots of opportunity for public input, lots and lots of participants. And I'm really, really proud of the results that we have so far. I think we have a really lovely city. I'm really proud to be part of the city council and have this opportunity to serve you. So I wanted to talk about the mission statement, but I also would like to just kind of highlight some of the things that I've been doing as your representative for different meetings. The mayor's already mentioned that we had the Beckman Bridge ribbon cutting ceremony recently, and that included the Canyon Creek Road intersection roundabout that's now open, and the introduction of the new all-electric trolley. There was a huge turnout for that, and that was really, really fun for me to see. I bet you there were over 200 people who came to that ceremony. They ranged from lots and lots of little kids, retirees, neighbors. And then we even had a group of bicyclists come across the bridge, that looked to me maybe 20 bicyclists. So there are bikers in our town. I also, after that ceremony, I attended the DEI Speaker Ceremony on the Oregon's Jewish History by Judy Margals. She's the retired CEO of the Jewish Museum and Center for the Holocaust Education, and that was really interesting. She spoke about how Jewish immigrants built their lives and established communities and impacted social, economic, political aspects in here in Oregon. On that last Thursday, I attended the Clackamas Cities Association Dinner that was hosted by West Lynn, and that was held in the renovated historical city hall for West Lynn, which was very interesting. We had a guest, a keynote speaker, Kate Brown, who was our former governor, and now she's serving as the president of the Willamette Falls Trust and is leading the efforts to restore the Willamette Falls, which you probably all are aware, but that waterfall is the second-largest waterfall in the nation by volume in North America. So that's really cool. That's just, you know, right at our doorstep. I attended the Memorial Day Ceremony with the mayor. And then upcoming meetings tomorrow, the Red Cross is holding a seasonal wildfire partner briefing, and I'm going to listen and learn about how to engage and better prepare to collaborate during and after disasters that hopefully we never have, but if you're prepared, hopefully things will go a little bit better. Then on Wednesday, June 4th, I'll be attending the Tourism Promotion Committee and attend the Oregon Tech Student Idea Fest, which I'm really, really excited about. The last thing, if I'm just going to talk about one more thing, is I'd just like to talk about the budget. Every year, we put together a budget, and it's quite a process. At our last city council meeting, I mentioned that, you know, at first, I was really overwhelmed to be part of a budget committee for a city, but now it's like one of my favorite things to do, because when you're part of the budget committee, or if you watch the meetings, then you get to learn about all the different departments within the city and what they do and how they spend our resources. And to me, it's just a really thoughtful, well-thought-out, managed program that the city does. In fact, for more than a quarter of a century, since 1998, the Finance Department has continuously received the annual distinguished budget presentation award for their documents. And to receive that award, the city has prepared a document that's easy to read, discloses the financial policies, and clearly explains where the resources come from and how they will be used. And in order to get that award, you have to conform to more than 90 criteria. So I just really, really applaud our finance director and our city manager and everybody who's involved in the budget process. We have a beautiful city because we have really dedicated staff and volunteers that make it run really well. So those are my comments. I just wanted to say thank you again for everything.
Thank you. Councillor Dunwell?
Out of respect of, in interest of time and out of respect for all of you who took time this evening to attend, I have no comments.
Councillor Cunningham?
Trying to keep mine short. Last Tuesday, I happened to, I had the opportunity to go on a ride-along with our local law enforcement. It was a great experience to see our local deputies in action. We were, it was a little bit of a busier night for Wilsonville, a couple of domestic violence arrests, unfortunately, but I got to see the whole system all the way up to the jail and back. But it was a good experience. There's a lot of experience out there on the street, a lot of years of experience that our deputies have. We also were able to stop by the Wilsonville High School varsity baseball game. They remain undefeated, and they play again tomorrow evening at the high school for anybody who's interested in going on and cheering on our Wildcats as they head into the semifinals. And I also wanted to give a quick shout-out. Last, last meeting in councillor concerns, I brought up the issue with RVs being parked in the Safeway parking lot in the middle of Town Center, and that it was a concerning thing that had been shared online due to the efforts of really a couple of our local citizens that really started to kind of talk with the businesses and kind of bridge a gap with those businesses and with our law enforcement, making sure everyone is on the same page. If you go over to the Safeway parking lot right now, you'll note that there are no RVs parked in that parking lot, and a lot of people are pretty pleased with that. I had a little bit more, but I will hold those comments as well because it's going to be a long night.
Councillor Shavon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll also be brief. The Beckman Bridge Open House or Ribbon Cutting was great fun and a wonderful celebration for the entire city. It was wonderful to be there. I also attended the French Prairie Forum Meeting. That's a smaller group of cities from Wilsonville South into Marion County, primarily Donald and Aurora, other smaller cities from that area. And we talked about some of the challenges that we all have. We learned more about the transportation package coming forward from the legislature, hopefully soon. Upcoming meetings, I'll be attending the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee meeting this Thursday, this Thursday as secondary to the mayor. And then my granddaughters and I will proudly be attending the Pride Celebration this Saturday. Also, I have upcoming meetings with citizens, coffee meetings, citizens that have reached out to me that would like to share their ideas, their concerns. So please know that I'm happy to meet with you. Elkabees is a great place. I've been there, I'd love to go again. So I look forward to meeting you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items on consent?
Resolution number 3196, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with BSS International, Inc., for the fiscal year FY 2026, Slurry Seal Project, capital improvement project number 4014, minutes of the May 5, 2025 city council meeting, and minutes of the May 19, 2025 city council meeting.
Council President Barry can have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? A second. Motion to approve the following order of agenda has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All the, then we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. So we have no new business or continuing business tonight. We have a number of items slated for public hearing tonight and for our community members here in person and watching at home. There is a specific process we need to follow, so it asks for your patience. Some of it's going to be repetitive, and I have to read a dialogue script, so here we go. Tonight, we will have a public hearing to consider on First Reading, Ordinance Number 898, and to also consider Resolution Number 3203. I would ask the city attorney to read the title of these two measures.
This is the First Reading of Ordinance Number 898, an ordinance of the city of Wilsonville adopting the 2025-2045 Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis as a sub-element of the Comprehensive Plan and related Comprehensive Plan text amendments, and Resolution Number 3203, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting the housing production strategy.
These items come to us as a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with the staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then I will ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify, and then I will ask anyone who is on the Zoom meeting who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. After each person testifies, councillors may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified, or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed, council deliberates, and I will announce the result. We wish to, we wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that refrain, refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone before you has said, but you want to ensure you have legal standing in the public record, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. This is a hard three minutes. Since this is a legal process for considering a land use decision, we need you to state your name and address for the public record. The public hearing is now open at 7:49 PM. Ms. Rabel, please provide the staff's presentation.
All right, let me get that pulled up here. Okay, good evening, Mayor O'Neill and councillors. I am Kim Rabel, Senior Planner, and I'm here tonight with Beth Goodman to my right, as well as Nicole Underwood online of Echo Northwest to present for your consideration the Housing Our Future Project. So before you tonight, there are two separate actions that are related to this project. The first is Ordinance 898, which includes the Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis, which is proposed as a sub-element to the city's which is proposed as a sub-element to the city's comprehensive plan along with related comprehensive plan text amendments that reflect the project adoption. Other exhibits that are included with this ordinance include the findings report, which demonstrates how the HNCA and the Comprehensive Plan text amendments comply with applicable city metro and state policies and regulations, as well as an exhibit that is the public record for the Housing Our Future project. Secondly, Resolution Number 3203 is the Housing Production Strategy. And this is a standalone strategy document that is not adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. But we will be presenting these items together concurrently in this hearing. And so, we do want to keep our remarks brief tonight, but for the benefit of the audience, I want to take a moment to highlight that Wilsonville has a long history of planning for housing, and the work completed as part of the Housing Our Future project seeks to build upon this history. The slide shows some of the planning projects for housing that are housing-related, that the city has adopted since the 2014 Housing Needs Analysis, the last time we did this kind of work. This includes master plans for town center, a couple of master plans in the Frog Pond area, as well as the 2020 Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. Taken together, these efforts have focused on many different housing needs for different portions of the community across the city. And they serve as the basis from which the city will continue with proposed actions in the Housing Production Strategy. So to just briefly walk through the project and what it entails, I will now turn it over to Beth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So cities do housing needs analysis, housing needs and capacity analysis, and housing production strategies for a number of reasons. One, to look at long-term growth and understand where your buildable land is located within the city. Answering the question, does Wilsonville have enough buildable residential land to accommodate expected growth? And what policies are needed to help Wilsonville meet its unmet housing needs? On the next slide, please. So throughout this project, which has gone on since 2023, we've done a number of different public engagement activities, seeking to reach out to the public to understand unmet housing needs, and then to understand opportunities to address those housing needs related to potential housing production actions. So this list gives you the, the list of engagements that we've done over the last two and a half years. On the next slide, please. A little summary of the Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis. This is a very quick summary of it. So Metro forecasts that Wilsonville will need to accommodate about 2,815 new dwelling units between 2025 and '45. On your existing buildable land, you've got capacity for about 3,600 new dwelling units. So you've got enough land to meet the housing needs in terms of capacity. A few things to point out. A lot of this capacity is certainly in Frog Pond East and South. Looking at Town Center, that's an important place to accommodate multifamily housing, depending on redevelopment in Town Center. And then other areas of the city, you've also got capacity on some land in a few different places. So you've got surplus of about 819 units of capacity on existing buildable land. On the next slide. So to reiterate that, you have sufficient capacity to accommodate your housing needs, and your growth may actually exceed Wilsonville's Metro's forecast. And that's okay. You have a little more capacity than you need. You need to continue to plan for a variety of housing types to meet your changing demographics and affordability concerns. And so what we mean by that is more townhouses, a little fewer single-family detached housing than we saw in the historical mix, looking at housing that is accessible for people with disabilities, multi-generational housing opportunities for larger households, smaller units for your aging population, which typically have smaller household sizes. So on the next slide, please. And from that, we vault into discussing the Housing Production Strategy. As we've discussed before, each household has a different housing need, a need for housing that's affordable or affordable housing based on this income, their income. So a household of four in Wilsonville, their household income, median household income, family income, would be about $116,900. That household could afford about $2,900 in monthly housing costs, or a house valued up to about $380,000. Well, your median sales price in Wilsonville is quite a bit above that, at $585,000. And that requires a household to have earnings of about $180,000 to afford that. When we look at average monthly rent, about $2,000 on average, including basic utilities, a household would need to earn about $80,000, or somewhere between 60% and 80% of median family income to afford that. So all of these things are things we're keeping in mind as we're looking at what unmet housing needs are. On the next slide. The focus of the Housing Production Strategy is generally households with incomes below 120% of median family income. And the hardest types of housing to get built by the private market without any subsidy is housing that's affordable below 80% of median family income, or housing that costs about $2,300 per month. So about 75% of your households in Wilsonville fall into what I'd call the focus of the Housing Production Strategy. The higher-income households are more likely to be able to afford existing or newly-built housing in Wilsonville. So when we think about affordable housing by different types, this just gives you a different idea of the types of housing that would be affordable. So income-restricted affordable housing, you need about 350 units that would fall into the 60% or less of median family income. About 90 units that would fall into the 80 to 60 to 80% of median family income. And so that's going to often be market-rate multifamily housing, for instance. That kind of housing is hard to get built on its own because it's not financially feasible to build it without some sort of public subsidy for it. And then the rest of the housing is above 80% of median family income is generally built by the housing market. In the Housing Production Strategy, we looked at things that were barriers to building any type of housing, and that's an awful lot of the focus of the actions in the Housing Production Strategy. And that would apply to those households with incomes above 80% of median family income, the housing that's affordable to them. So on the next slide. So I mentioned that this is about a lot more than just affordability, or if I hadn't mentioned it, I'm mentioning it now. We talked about different housing needs of different groups of people with those groups of people. So for instance, renter households need well-maintained units and transparency in housing costs. One of the things that we heard through the Housing Production Strategy is that especially older rental housing is beginning to have some condition issues. So that's one of the things we discussed in the Housing Production Strategy. For your Latino population, larger units for extended multi-generational families, that's certainly a need. For people experiencing homelessness, housing with mental health, substance abuse, and healthcare services involved in the housing is important. That is present in something like your Vuela recent development. Seniors need accessible housing, such as single-level housing, with adequate air conditioning, which is becoming more of an issue as housing, as heat increases, and support to age-in-place and access to resources, accesses to things like transit through SMART, and so on and so forth. People with disabilities have similar sorts of need. So we're considering all of these different housing needs that are based on demographic characteristics. On the next slide. Actions in the Housing Production Strategy. So in looking at what actions we should include in the HPS, we discussed with staff, with stakeholders, with all of our decision-makers here, whether the actions taken together help achieve more fair and equitable housing outcomes, considering things like affordable homeownership and rental housing, increasing housing stability, housing options for people experiencing homelessness, location of housing, making sure that there's plans for housing in affordable, that it is affordable in areas with compact mixed-use, housing choice and options in safe neighborhoods with high-quality amenities, and then increasing fair housing, especially for state and federal-protected classes. So we need to do all of these things in the Housing Production Strategy, considering your existing policies, as well as the new policies. The next slide. In adopting the actions, in adopting the Housing Production Strategy, what you're saying is that you're committed to trying to implement the actions in the HPS over the six-year period of the HPS. Beyond the six-year period, you'll do a new Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis, and you'll develop a new Housing Production Strategy and evaluate how well the actions in the Housing Production Strategy that we're talking about this evening, how well they worked? How did they help achieve more fair and equitable housing? Implementing the actions by the city, we considered the need for funding availability, because of course, funding is a big part of some of the actions we considered, and then staffing capacity, so having adequate staffing. The selected HP actions should address these issues and these considerations, and need to be achievable. While you're committing to try to implement these strategies, you do have a midpoint review in three years, at which point, if there are actions that you're not able to achieve, you may switch those actions out for other actions that achieve similar housing needs. You can also explore actions outside of the Housing Production Strategy, and it may well be that at your midpoint check-in, you want to move some of those into your Housing Production Strategy. On the next slide. So the recommended actions, we've categorized them into things that are in the planning program. So what your planning department would be doing, looking at rezoning or designating land, looking at variety of housing types, ensuring that you have opportunities for development of more housing that is accessible for people with disabilities, multi-generational housing, that kind of thing. Looking at how you do administrative review of housing proposals, housing development permits for development that would be under clear and objective standards. Currently, you have a hearings process for that. Might you change that so that there are still opportunities for public input? But a hearing is not necessarily required. Looking at accessibility requirements, so thinking about how you do accessibility, how you have done it for requirements in Frog Pond, and is that a requirement you want to move more citywide? And then preserving existing affordable housing, focus on, on housing that is at the end of its tax credit status with the federal government. So low-income housing tax credits, you've got one development in Wilsonville where your low-income housing tax credits are likely to expire in this next six-year period. And what could the city do to help ensure that those are, continue to be affordable housing? And then actions that are foundational for future action. So one of them is hiring a housing specialist. So that would be a staff person who focused on implementing the actions that are in the future housing program. They're not actions recommended in the Housing Production Strategy, but I believe that at least one or two of these are actions that you're already talking about. So the rental inspection program is something that you've been thinking about. We heard about all of these actions as being very important to different stakeholders and decision-makers through this process. So part of the important thing to be able to implement these is having staff capacity to implement them because they're quite a lot of work, as well as establishing a funding source that would provide stable funding for these kinds of programs. So things like a community land trust, providing homeowner, homebuyer assistance, land disposition to support development of affordable rental and ownership opportunities. These are all things that you may do in the future. So on the next slide, please. Here we have the implementation schedule, or the proposed implementation schedule for the Housing Production Strategy. In developing this schedule, staff paid a lot of attention to the staff's upcoming work plan and staff capacity. So for instance, evaluating redesignating or rezoning land, the staff would take a portion of 2026 to do this evaluation, presumably getting input from stakeholders, talking with decision-makers, like your planning commission, your city council. And then what we're saying here is that sometime in 2027, certainly by December 31st, 2027, the council would take some official action, would give staff direction about that. So that's the general pattern we've got in here. On the next slide, please.
That turns it back over to me. So one thing I would just point out, going back to this prior slide as well, is that this Housing Production Strategy is essentially a framework for work the city will be doing over the next six years. So each of these actions will have their own decision-making process. They will have their own public input and participation and stakeholder involvement. And so while, while going through this process to adopt a Housing Production Strategy is the city's commitment to begin exploration of these actions with a good faith ever made to implement them, we still need to do the work to see how these actions would best fit within the City of Wilsonville. So there will be more, more communication and engagement on these items forthcoming. So also included with the ordinance is a Comprehensive Plan text amendment. It's minor edits to the Residential Development Section of the Comprehensive Plan that reflects the role of these two documents in the city's housing planning. So essentially, reflecting that this is the guiding structure for how we're going to look at housing planning moving forward and replacing references to the prior Housing Needs Analysis, which is the 2014 Wilsonville Residential Land Study. So with that, on May 14th, the Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number LP 250001, which recommended that city council adopt the Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis, Housing Production Strategy, and related Comprehensive Plan text amendments with some minor modifications made to the acknowledgements pages to make sure those are up to date. Those updates have been included within the packet that you received this evening. And so with that, that concludes our presentation tonight. We are happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
I don't have it showing up here, but Counselor Dunwell.
Thank you. First of all, Beth, Nicole, and Kim, as the Chair of the Housing Our Future Task Force, I want to just tell you how deeply grateful I am for the work that you provided because we, it was a heavy lift on many of those five meetings. And I just want to make sure that all of our citizens know that what we ended up with was the culmination of some really deep conversations about what the future of housing is for our city. We were, we were required by the State of Oregon to move through this exercise and comply with the requirements. And the Department of Land Conservation and Development was present at most, if not all, of our meetings, trying to help guide us through what would be acceptable to them in language and what was not acceptable. And I think we came to some good compromises. And what we, what, I want to really also go back to that slide that shows the priority, what we've got in the agreement and what happens next because that's what I really want to focus on. Thank you. Were actions A, B, C, D, and E, we believe can all be achieved in the six years which are required by the state. And let me caveat that by the state is requiring this, but they have at this point not given us any allocation of funding to support those efforts. And we all understand that, and it's not just Wilsonville. It's every city in the state that has, that is having to go through this exercise. As Beth can nod her head and say, yes, you've been everywhere. But actions F and G, the foundational actions for the future, those were something that we worked really hard and pushed really hard to get included in the implementation of at least what the future state could be, even though we don't believe we may not be able to achieve those in the six years. I do appreciate the support of Counselor Barry in also, you know, some of my thoughts on, on really making sure this was a priority. And as Beth mentioned, the rental housing inspection program is actually in some of our council goals that we, that we put together. I believe it was in February. And why that's important is that we do have some aging housing stock. And aging housing stock, if not properly monitored and managed, can actually become poor housing conditions. So we believe that that is critical, particularly because we have one of the highest percentages of rental properties within the state on a per capita basis. of rental properties within the state on a per capita basis. we also want to take a look at the Community Land Trust moving forward, too. Even though it's not in the immediate goals that are achievable in those six years, we do believe it's something we must pay attention to, and the homebuyer assistance. Because if you don't know this, one of the greatest accumulators of generational wealth is homeownership. And being able to start folks that have the ability to potentially purchase a home, but not, don't necessarily have the down payment, and finding alternative methods to be able to get them into some type of homeownership. And CLTs, Community Land Trust, and Homebuyer Assistance are ways of doing that. So we are keeping that on the radar, even though it's not included. So it was, and land disposition is also part of that. So really appreciate the candor that Beth and Kim provided, and Nicole also, as we move forward on this. And I'm, again, I give you my deep appreciation, and I'm in full support of us moving forward on this, so thank you.
I don't have any public testimony, I don't think, on this, but I'll read this. For public test, we do? Okay. I know, but usually I get something, but okay. For public testimony, we will start with the people who sign up in advance to testify. Please remember to include your name and address for the record. Staff, if people have signed up in advance, who is our person to testify this evening? Garrett Pryor? And he's on Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Pryor.
Yes, hi, Mayor, members in council. As somebody who helped build a coalition of supported voices all over the political spectrum for the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, I believe the thorough community vetting, planning commission review, and excellent work by city staff that have developed a plan that we can be proud of. It is comprehensive and deep, and will set the stage for targeted solutions to continue our part in being a leader in city housing design and development. I'm looking forward to the next steps to address some of the key issues we just talked about. A long-term housing with medical services that wrap around, like we have here in Villavlois. Apartments and multifamily housing with three-plus bedrooms. We had a very small percentage of that. We need that for multi-generational housing. First-time homeowners, and the importance the counselor just spoke to. And then to deliver and build housing where it's needed most, in the places that we've planned for it, in town center, in Villavlois, in Frog Pond. That's the whole connection to our plan for businesses and transit and a connected community. Thank you very much.
Do I now have a motion to approve ordinance number 898, an ordinance of the city of Wilsonville adopting the 2025-2045 Budget Analysis and Sub Element of the Comprehensive Plan and Related Comprehensive Plan Amendments?
I move to adopt ordinance number 898 on First Street.
Do I have a second? Second. It has been moved by Council President Barry and seconded by Counselor Shavon to approve ordinance number 898. Certainly, an ordinance of the city of Wilsonville adopting the 2025-2045 Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis as a sub-element of the Comprehensive Plan and related Comprehensive Plan Amendments on First Street. Is there any further discussion? I'll only add on my end that I concur with everything that Counselor Denham said about it. I think, I appreciate all your efforts on this. It's something we need for the community, and thank you. Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I will call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, five-zero. Motion passes. Now we will turn to our second public hearing.
Mayor, you need the resolution as well. Resolution number 3203.
Oh, is there, oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. So we now consider Resolution Number 3203? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 3203, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting the Housing Production Strategy?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 3203.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor President Barry and Counselor Shavon. And, excuse me, let's try that again. Sorry, guys, I'm tired. It has been moved by Council President Barry and seconded by Counselor Shavon to adopt Resolution Number 3203, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville's adopting the Housing Production Strategy. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I will call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. The motion passes five-zero. Now, next, we will turn to our second public hearing regarding Resolution Number 3198, 3199, and Resolution Number 3200. And I'll ask the city attorney to read the titles of these three measures.
Resolution Number 3198, a resolution declaring the city's eligibility to receive state shared revenues. Resolution Number 3199, a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state shared revenues. And Resolution Number 3200, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville adopting the budget-making appropriations, declaring the ad valorem tax levy, and classifying the levy as provided by ORS 3.310.060-sub2 for fiscal year 2025-26.
The hearing is declared open at 8:18 PM. Folks, the city council will be taking public testimony tonight at the public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner, as I said earlier, but I have to restate this. First, staff will present their report. Second testimony will be asked for by those who wish to testify. And third, council will consider motion for each resolution separately. This meeting is being held in person remotely by Zoom. If you're listening to this meeting remotely, when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone if you would like to testify. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the number shown on the screen and enter webinar ID number shown on the screen when prompted. When called up to testify, state your full name and address for the record. I request for those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council. Simply indicating you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify is sufficient. Each person will have a hard three minutes to provide testimony. Thank you, and now staff will present the report. As soon as our tech wizard gets everything lined up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Catherine Smith, the city's Assistant Finance Director. And with me tonight is Keith Katko, the city's Finance Director. Before you this evening are three resolutions. Resolution Number 3198, 3199, and 3200 surrounding the fiscal year 2526 budget. First up are state shared revenues. Resolution Number 3198 acknowledges the city's eligibility to receive state shared revenues if the city provides four or more of the following services: lease, fire, planning, street construction, maintenance and lighting, sewer, storm, and utility services. The city provides all but fire meeting eligibility. These are revenues collected by the state and dispersed based on population to municipalities. State shared revenues anticipated and budgeted for fiscal year 2526 include most notably gas tax. Budgeted at $2.2 million, this is our single largest state shared revenue source. The next three are general fund revenues, liquor tax of $470,000, state revenue sharing of $400,000, and cigarette tax of $18,000. Next, Resolution 3199 acknowledges the city's election to receive state shared revenues. ORS 221.770 establishes the process for the city to elect distributions of these funds, including an acting resolution and by holding a public hearing following, allowing for public comment. And next, we have Resolution 3200, for which I will turn it over to Keith Katko.
Yes, thank you, Catherine. I'm Keith Katko. I'm the city's Finance Director, and yes, this is the resolution for the formal adoption of the city fiscal year 2526 budget. So I just have a few high-level comments, and then we're going to do a quick, or a little bit of a deeper dive into the Transit Fund, and then I'll, we'll turn it back to you. So I just have a few high-level comments here. And this budget resolution follows the Budget Committee's approval in May, after two evenings of deliberations totaling approximately six, six and a half hours. The full budget, of course, is available on the city's website with a condensed summary really provided in the budget message at the front of the budget. And that is the best way to tackle this budget, because it is so large and there's so many dispersed revenue sources. We have 24 funds. But if you really wanted to get a quick synopsis of the budget, read the budget message. The total budget, of course, is $228,927,800. And that is the amalgamated comprehensive budget of all city funds combined. Like I mentioned, we have the 24 funds. And it is really the equilibrium point in which total resources, total resources are the beginning fund balances and all the current year revenues, where they equal the total requirements of the expenses in the ending fund balances in each of those funds, and then rolled up comprehensively to that $228 million. Just once again, as we talked about in the Budget Committee, and we've talked about in the Budget Message and in the Budget Book, the budget level of control for the city of Wilsonville is at the fund level. And again, we have 24 funds. Each one of those funds have their own revenue restrictions. That's why they are in a separate fund. And within those funds, the budget level of control is even tighter. It's at the program level within each fund. So many funds have many departments. So for example, the General Fund has a library, it has the police force, IS and whatnot. Each one of those is, has an approved budget, which they cannot go over. And so I kind of wanted to just leave it there. We're going to have our Transit Director Dwight Bershier come up, talk a little bit more, do a little bit more of a deeper dive on the Transit Fund, and in particular, the State Transportation Infrastructure Funding, STIF, which is a component of the Transit Fund. And I think I will have Dwight come up, and we'll do a little bit more of a, some contextual overview of the Transit Fund.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Dwight Bershier. I am the city's Transit Director. And I think we have a, somebody has a... All right. So my goal here is brief. It's simply to kind of clear up some confusion about how SMART is funded relative to the State Transportation Improvement Fund. We also call it STIF. So we can roll forward.
Oh.
Somebody.
Sorry.
I'm sitting over here.
Okay. Are you rolling it forward? Okay.
All right, just a little bit about the program. STIF was created as part of HB 2017, back in 2017. The state started collecting revenue from all employees in the state of Oregon, starting in 2018. And then in 2019, that money, those monies were turned over to what we call the qualified entities. There are 42 qualified entities in the state. Our qualified entity is TRIMET. So the program purpose was to expand, improve, and maintain public transit services. There was a few areas that were important to the architects of HB 2017. One was to increase frequency and the expansion of bus routes in communities with high percentage of low-income households. Another was to provide monies to buy buses powered by CNG and battery electric buses. And then also to reduce fares in communities with a high percentage of low-income households. To improve frequency and reliability in transit, and then finally, coordination. They insisted that there be coordination between public transportation service providers to reduce what they call fragmentation. So I couldn't fit all of that up there, so I just expand, improve, and maintain public transportation services. ODOT collects the funds, or the Department of Revenue collects the funds. They send the funds over to ODOT, and then ODOT disperses those funds to the 42 qualified entities. Now, there are a couple of areas that ODOT can take money for special programs, projects of statewide significance. And back in 2018, 19, ODOT started talking about the bridge between, the I-5 bridge between Oregon and Washington as being a project of statewide significance that they might look at pulling some of that STIF money from that, but they found other funding sources. So just to give you an example of what a project of statewide significance might be. And then there are, there's a certain percentage of money that they keep for program administration and the like. The funding is then, passes through a funnel. 90% of those funds are population and payroll-based. And that is where we get, where SMART gets its funds. Funds are run through TRIMET, and then TRIMET, based on a formula, where they look at our payroll tax, because we already have an employer payroll tax. And so they use a formula to determine what amount they will give SMART, what amount they will give the city of Canby, Sandy, and so on and so forth. I think they have nine. We are considered a sub-recipient. And so they figure out how much money they will disperse to each of us. It's important to note that SMART is the second-largest recipient of STIF dollars in the tri-county area. They carve off 5% for discretionary grants, and we have received some of those monies for our technology upgrades and the like. for our technology upgrades and the like. Inter-community grants, 4%, and that's 4% of a total. And we'll talk a little bit about the total that they collect each biennium. And then Technical Resource Center. So they, there's a lot of questions about STIF that agencies like ours can contact them and get help with questions that we might have. Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay. All right. So, "Population Formula: Approximately 10% of the funding supports transit services for older adults and individuals with disabilities." This was part of the S T F, not STIF, but S T F fund that they rolled into STIF. And so 10% of that money is used specifically, has to be used specifically for individuals, seniors, and those with disabilities. And then the payroll formula, approximately 90% of that funding is for everything else. However, they say it can also be used to help cover the costs of providing that, those services for older adults and individuals with disabilities. And then they forced a 1% student transportation requirement. So 1% of the total has to be used to provide student transportation. And whether that's bus passes or just free fare or no fare, it really is up to the, up to the transit agency, in the Q E in this case. And then you can see that the estimated revenue for upcoming, the upcoming biennium is about $243.4 million. And the vast majority of that will stay here in the tri-county area and stay with, with Next slide, please. Okay, so, "Eligibilities." Applicants, the only agencies that can apply for STIF funds are the qualified entities. And in this case, that's TRIMET. So SMART can't apply for STIF funds. We can put in an application for some of the discretionary grant money and so on and so forth. But the formula funds are, basically have to be requested or they are sent to the qualified entity. The other transit agencies like SMART access their STIF formulas through the qualified entities. 42 qualified entities, and the rest, a couple hundred of us are sub-receipients to those qualified entities. What about the projects? And this is kind of where, you know, where we're talking about the service to Clackamas Town Center. Projects must improve or maintain public transportation, and then projects must appear in a compliant local plan. So if somebody approached me as a Transit Director and said, "I'd really like a route to, you know, the trial, to the ferry over in, in Canby," or something like that, if it's not in a plan, a compliant plan like the Transit Master Plan, then it cannot be funded using STIF dollars. And then the restrictions were put on it because they realized that agencies like TRIMET, with their light rail service and even their west service, could really eat up a lot of that money. And so they put a restriction on it that the money could not be used for light rail capital expenses. It can be used for operations, but it can't be used for light rail capital expenses, and it cannot be used for supplanting local or regional funds. So monies that we currently generate here in Wilsonville, say for instance, the employer payroll tax, we couldn't say, "We're going to get rid of that and only use STIF." That would be a violation of STIF law. Next slide, please. All right. So here's a, just a, kind of a low-level, if you will, map of the service that we are proposing and the stops that we are proposing. The, the service would begin on this end. Terminus would be the Wilsonville Transit Center. It would make its way through Wilsonville, picking up people along the way. And then there would be a stop at the Stafford Hamlet. And this is a area that I have met with folks since I started here, and I guess there is no service in the hamlet there, and they are desirous of service there. The next stop would be along the I-205 in West Lynn at 10th Street, and then over to Oregon City at the Oregon City Shopping Center. And there are connections along the way there, and then on to Clackamas Town Center, where there are currently 14 different connections there, including the Green Line. SMART would create the 15th connection there in Clackamas Town Center. I think that's the last slide I have.
Oh, yeah, okay. If you have any questions on the Transit Fund, we'll have Dwight up here. Or if you have any questions on any other funds, of course, in the budget, you can, you can ask me. Or if you have specific ones to Dwight.
I do.
Sure.
Dwight, I've, and Keith, both of you can jump in. I've gone back and examined the city budgets for fiscal year 2021, '22, '22, '23, '23, '24, and '24, '25, and this current budget. And it appears to me the Transit Fund stability has been consistently strong. Is my understanding a correct one?
I would say most recently, yeah. You know, I've, I've been here a while. 20 years ago, we weren't as stable. Now, we had, the Transit Fund was on the watch, what we called the watch list, meaning we were always looking at that ending fund balance. But really, since Dwight came and the implementation of the STIF funding, as well as we were benefactor of some significant federal grants, it really bolstered up the Transit Fund resources. I would say since that 19, 20, 2019, 20...
Yeah. The only, the only time I recall any issue with the budget was when I first sat here, the first Budget Committee meeting, and they said, "Welcome to Wilsonville. You're going broke." So, you think I'm joking? That was a greeting. So, anyway, we put our heads down, myself and the team, and we've built one of the most successful transit agencies in the state of Oregon at this point. Yes.
Oh, I thank you, Dwight, for all those efforts. And I, I'm just gonna, I'm trying to formulate these questions, make sure I have the correct information to give my answers tonight on how I feel on this. SMART is not funded through the city's general fund in any way. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
All right. Is it correct that the SMART is funded by STIF funds and not by the general fund at all levels? Is that correct?
We have federal funding and STIF funding, and then of course, the local payroll tax, employer payroll tax.
And for the sake of the community here, STIF is a statewide program. This is 100% outside dollars. It's not local Wilsonville dollars. Is that correct?
To the extent that the dollars are collected from all employees across the state.
So they're saying some of them are going to be in Wilsonville?
Absolutely.
All right.
Yes. And we try to keep that money here, Mayor.
Understand. And is it my understanding that the actual STIF revenue allocated to the city is more likely to outpace current projections? Is that my understanding?
I think that's what we're seeing currently. Example, I think we budgeted $2 million per year for STIF, and this year, which is just about over, we came in at $4.3 million. So we're over, over twice what we budgeted.
Okay. Thank you. Is it also correct that the risk of losing STIF funds is extremely low? In the current draft of the transportation legislation, or TRIP 25, contains a STIF increase of over 80% annually?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Am I understanding correctly that the F T E positions used for the Town Center route, that while 10% of the SMART STIF funds would support these positions within the SMART service area, that the lion's share, 90% of the route, would be funded through STIF regional coordination, which is provided by TRIMET?
That's correct. And TRIMET has already started paying that money.
Okay. Is it also correct to say that with respect to the customer service representatives, their salaries and benefits are covered 100% of STIF funds and not out of the city's general fund?
That is correct.
Okay. Is it also correct, understanding that this transit center, excuse me, Transit Center is meant to serve as a regional customer service center hub, and four other service providers will be sharing the cost associated with the two representatives, thus reducing SMART's overall contribution?
Yes, that is, that is the discussion that we're having with them. Yes.
Is it also correct that the Wilsonville-Clackamas Town Center route has been listed in the city budgets going back to F Y 2022 through '23, essentially four budget cycles?
I believe that's correct. Yes.
Is it also correct that was part of the Transit Master Plan updated, passed in, updated and passed in 2023 by the previous city council?
That's correct.
Is it also correct it was brought before city council on June 17, 2024, when discussion of the statewide transportation improvement fund for fiscal year 2026 through 2027 biennium?
That's correct.
And it was clearly spelled out at that time as well?
Yes. And I have Kelsey Lewis here as the young lady that made the presentation that night.
Okay. Is that correct?
She's back there.
Oh, she's somewhere?
Yep.
My glasses are...
All the way in the back.
Way in the back, hiding in the back. Okay. Okay. That's all my questions.
So, just, you know, talking about the funding overall for SMART, how deep in the red does SMART run?
We don't run in the red at all. We're one of, one of the few agencies in the state that operates in the black.
Totally in the black?
Yes. And have for the eight years that I've been here. Yes.
And then, so the route from Wilsonville Transit to Clackamas Town Center, I mean, part of that purpose is to serve stops in the West Lynn and Oregon City so that people can access county services? Is that true?
Yes. And the Community College and the Courthouse, which I recently visited, yes.
Yeah. And then I know that the city's goals is, of course, to have good employment and have people easily access their jobs or have residents access jobs outside Wilsonville. So would this help serve that purpose if people were working in West Lynn or Oregon City or the Happy Valley area or even North Portland towards the airport?
Absolutely. As I said, if, if the bus, you know, when it arrives and if it goes, you know, all the way to Clackamas Town Center, there are 14 other connections to be made there. And I, I just, as a Transit Director, I don't ever want transportation to be a barrier for someone that wants to be employed, that wants a job. A transit should also always be that, that bridge that, that is necessary. So...
Thank you. I think that's my questions for now.
Does the other councilors have questions with this one? Councilor Cunningham.
Director Burchier, was crime ever a consideration in this route?
No, sir.
Was public safety ever a consideration in this route?
Public safety is, if you're talking about the, the operator's safety, then that's always a consideration for me.
No, I'm talking about the citizens of Wilsonville, who will have to live with this decision.
Well, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act tells me that I can't, in my line of work, I cannot use that. I cannot.
You can't use crime stats that indicate...
I cannot, I cannot set up a route. Let's say you want the route to go to Bridgeport, right? And there are, the folks that live in, you know, in that area are of a certain persuasion. And you're, and I say, "I'm looking at Clackamas Town Center," and those people are of a different persuasion, maybe not the persuasion that you would prefer. The federal government prohibits me from selecting one over the other based on crime. I can't do that. I can't say, "I'm going to Bridgeport because there's no crime there, and I will not go to Clackamas Town Center because there is crime." That would violate Title VI of the Civil Rights Act.
Is criminal a protected class?
I don't know that it's a protected class.
I haven't heard that.
But, but it is suggesting that there is something inherently wrong with Clackamas Town Center versus, say, you know, Washington Square or some other place.
Then that would suggest that crime is right.
I don't know that, I don't, I can't answer that. I don't understand where you're going with that.
Well, if, if we're suggesting that there's something wrong with Clackamas Town Center because of crime existing there, I'm not sure who would, would say that, that crime is not wrong.
Well, I'm saying for yourself, that's a decision that you have to make as the Transit Director, and we're planning routes. I don't use that. I, I, I can't. Because that is, at its core, discriminatory, and I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to participate in that, sir.
I'm going to disagree that criminals are covered as a protected class in this case? Is it true that recently you gave a, a talk and you said that you were happy to invite people onto your buses even though you know that they had just stolen televisions and looted them?
Well, it's, it's interesting that you would mention that. I knew that there were individuals that I was speaking to that would share that with you. So what I was sharing was my experience in New Orleans. And you may not know my background, but I am the individual that is responsible for evacuating the city of New Orleans following Hurricane Katrina. And I was pointing out that when I was called by the great, by the governor of the great state of Louisiana to evacuate the convention center and the Superdome, there were, there was all kind of talk about the looting and all of the other lawlessness that was going on in New Orleans. And I suggested that when it was time and the levees had breached, that I didn't care what anybody had done. If they needed to get out of New Orleans safely, then they could get on the bus. And if they had a TV and that's, I had people getting on with trash bags full of, with their worldly goods. I didn't care. My goal was to move them out of harm's way, and that's what I did. I don't discriminate against people. I don't care, you know, there's probably not one person in this room that hasn't committed a crime, including yourself, sir. And so for you to, you know, I'm not, I'm not, exactly. I know it is. And I'm not, so I'm not going to stand in judgment of you. I, I would hope you wouldn't stand in judgment of them. I don't care what they've done. If they want to get out of New Orleans, and that's what I said, so I really, I said it for the purposes of getting back to you. So, mission accomplished.
Okay, good. I mean, I'm glad that, that was a transparent meeting. I, I heartily disagree with having someone jump onto one of our buses with stolen property, especially property stolen from Wilsonville, taken away, or property stolen from Clackamas Town Center, or vice versa. But on a budget question, has the SMART five-year forecast ever shown a 50% decrease over that five-year period before?
I, I can't really say for sure.
About the reserves.
Correct.
The, the reserves are built up and, over time, for different purposes. So we've had some pretty significant capital drawdowns of the reserves with some expansions of the yard. So the reserve's going to fluctuate, but it can never go below the operating reserve level that we have set for every operating, every fund that has an operating fund for the city.
Right. I, I understand that it can't go below that.
Right.
But if it were to continue on this downward trajectory and it's, were to get to that point, we would have to figure out another way to fix that problem. And that, that, probably the easiest solution would go, "Hey, let's just raise the, the business tax, the payroll tax."
Well, nobody's suggesting that we're raising the business tax for this route or any other route that's funded by STIF. Those are all funds that are allocated to expanding services that make connections within a region where they don't exist now. For people that are transit-dependent, for people that don't have a car or can't drive for whatever reason. So that's the whole purpose of STIF funding. If that funding goes away, it's a different conversation with council. We can't afford this route? So we have to come back and say, "Well, where, where should we cut?" Then we would look at, what's our core services? Our core services are serving Wilsonville. So then we would have to... So then we would have to retrench, come back, recalibrate, and make different recommendations.
I mean, I guess unless somebody made a Title VI argument, we weren't able to pull that line back.
Hey, I'm not going to get into discussion on Title VI, but that's stiff-funded. And so if that money goes away, we don't have the money to fund that route. That's not like talking about getting people from the transit station. We have a commitment to get anybody that needs a ride to their place of employment within 10 minutes. That's our core service. We will continue to do that. If those costs exceeded where we're at right now, then we would have to either come back and talk to council about increasing the payroll tax or cutting services. So those are all discussions that come with time. So I can't project what is the future.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we have a five-year forecast, and that five-year forecast does show a more than 50% decrease in the reserve fund. I'd be surprised if that was a standard practice, that our budget book showed that every single year, that we're just always on a decline.
Right. Well, the five-year forecast, of course, two things to mention about that. The stiff revenues were put into that five-year forecast very conservatively because we didn't have a trend line of what we were receiving. So you'll see 2 million, 2 million, 2 million, 2 million for the next five years. When in reality, as Dwight said, this current fiscal year end, it looks like we're going to get about 4 million in there. So really, those 2 million revenue forecasted numbers, which are just, you know, when you're looking two years ahead for a pretty new revenue source, are just educated guesses. And it turns out that we've got a two-year trend line of around 3.5 to 4 million. So really, we could revise that five-year forecast. A five-year forecast is really just, kind of just a lookout. So I guess it would offer that kind of context of it.
Forecasts are for planning purposes. They're not self-fulfilling prophecies. I just want to get that out there.
And when you did that, it didn't incorporate the 80% increase we're expecting on stiff, is that correct?
Right, right. Well, it's only in there 2 million a year. You know, our focus is really putting together the current year budget. And then, you know, we do that forecast, just to kind of keep an eye on that, what's heading down the line, and it gets revised. You know, we could revise it now. I mean, but it'll be revised for the next year budget.
Yeah, I didn't spend the last eight years building what is arguably the healthiest budget in the city to tear it down. That's certainly not my goal. But as the transit director, we have an obligation to put service out on the street, and service, it costs money. But I'm not sitting here at all concerned about the transit budget because I was part of the team that built it to where it is, and I'm proud of that. Make no excuses for that.
And you have a good working relationship with our chief works, is that correct?
Oh, I love Chief Works. Yeah, 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 yeah.
And you have, you and he have communicated about any sort of safety concerns during the transit areas?
We talked about it this morning, and he was surprised that there was any concern about crime on transit because there is, it is non-existent here in Wilsonville on the SMART system. We don't deal with it. It's not something we deal with.
That was my understanding when talking with him as well.
Let me be clear, I wasn't referring to crime on transit. I'm referring to crime being imported into Wilsonville. That is not Wilsonville, it's not a Wilsonville problem.
Right, and that hasn't been our experience with going to Salem since about 2010, to Wallerton and Barber before that. It's just not been our experience. We go to Canby on a daily basis. I ride that bus. So that has not been our experience, unless the criminals don't live in those particular towns. They only live in the Clackamas.
Councillor Wade, Councillor Chevlin.
Thank you. I also had the opportunity to reach out to Chief Works because I feel like if we're concerned about crime, we need to go to our professionals that deal with crime. And Chief Works said the same thing that Mr. Beshears just said, that we have two different lines coming from the south, not Clackamas County, but coming from both Salem and Woodburn, not both SMART ones, the chariot service, but nevertheless, they're servicing people from other communities coming into Wilsonville, bringing citizens that presumably live somewhere in those, or near those communities. And they're coming into Wilsonville either to shop or to visit or do any number of things, work. And there have been, there's been no evidence of increased criminal activity in our city coming from those cities in the south. So that made me more comfortable. I also asked Chief Works, what happens, though, if we do see an increase in crime coming from any of the areas that we serve, whether it be Clackamas Town Center or Woodburn or Salem, Oregon City? He said, well, he believes strongly, and he taught us about that or talked to us about that here at council a month or so ago about problem-oriented policing, that, you know, he's very aware and alert and working with Mr. Beshears about making sure our transit lines are safe and our cities are safe and our citizens are safe. But if we saw an increase of any sort of criminal activity that you could pinpoint was coming from a certain area, then he would gather teams of people together to determine what action needed to be taken, so his problem-oriented policing would be put into effect. So I don't have any concerns about whether people are coming from Timbuktu to Wilsonville. If they're coming here to be good citizens and to enjoy our community, then they're welcome. If they come here to break the law, then they need to be held accountable. And I feel confident that that would happen. Thank you.
I'd like the floor back. Thank you.
Wade, do you have questions?
She just yielded to me.
At this moment, I'd like to give the floor back to Councillor Cunningham to finish his questions, and then I do have comments after that.
Cunningham.
We have time limits now?
Point of order, are you asking that as councillors, we are going within three-minute time limits?
No, he's already had amount of time, so we have public testimony, so.
Sorry, again, are you asking that Councillor Cunningham stick to three more minutes?
How many more minutes you have, Mr. Cunningham?
Until my questions are asked and answered.
Okay, well, we'll see. We are at nine o'clock almost, but go ahead.
Thank you. To your point about crime existing, I know that the statement was made that there was a perception of crime in Clackamas Town Center. The South Gate area of Clackamas County is home to 50% of all property crime in the entire county and home to Clackamas Town Center. The surrounding districts of Oak Grove, Clackamas, and Sunnyside, included with South Gate, are home to 77% of all property crime in Clackamas County. It's not a small amount of crime. This isn't a blip on the radar. It is the hotspot on the map. So there's not a perception of crime there. The crime exists there.
Is that a question or statement?
I was finishing my earlier thought before I was cut off. Earlier in the meeting, Council President Berry said that part of our decision-making process includes a lot of people being represented. And I think that's extremely important. One of my rules for making a decision is making sure that the process leading to decisions has been fair, open, and transparent, that invites people into the process and that what they say matters. As I've gone through the Transit Master Plan and the supporting documents for it and looked at the survey results, I guess I'll ask the question here. Anywhere that you're aware of on any of these surveys was Clackamas Town Center, Oak Grove, Happy Valley, or Milwaukee, anything in that region? Was that included as a survey option that people actually wanted to go to?
Is Oregon City considered in that area where you're talking, or you're just cherry picking?
I mean, if you look at the map here, it's a pretty good distance from Oregon City to Clackamas Town Center. I'd say that that's not really cherry picking. I'd say that's a significant, about a third of the route distance away. So we've added 50% more route just to get to Clackamas Town Center, so.
Because that's where the connections are, sir.
Okay, so I asked a direct question.
That's what transit is about.
I asked a direct question.
Sure, what is it?
Is Clackamas Town Center, Milwaukee, Happy Valley, or any of those regions within, let's say, I don't know, five miles of Clackamas Town Center? Are any of those regions, were they ever a survey question that people could have selected and said, I really want to go there?
Well, I don't, I didn't take the survey myself, but I know that the Transit Master Plan itself speaks of Clackamas Town Center as a destination.
It does, and it was never included on a survey. Nobody ever asked to go there. I've looked at three different surveys, and each of them does not include any of those areas or those words.
Okay, well, we've been planning, I think, probably a year before, as I was thinking about it earlier, about a year before tolling became an issue, we started talking about providing a service to Clackamas Town Center based on a lot of factors, many of which included working with Clackamas County, Washington County, Ride Connection, West Lynn. I spoke at one of their city council work sessions. They were very desirous of service that they don't currently have, and so.
Who was? Who is "they were"? They were desirous of?
I said West Lynn. I spoke at the city council, at the mayor's request at that time.
So West Lynn wanted us to run this route?
I'm saying West Lynn, well, I will go a little further. West Lynn wanted SMART to be their service provider.
Okay, so that goes to my number-one decision thing. If this is a primary benefactor for Wilsonville residents, and it sure seems like Wilsonville residents got cut out of this decision-making process. And in fact, if you look at the top 25 commute trips to and from Wilsonville based on census data, there's a total of about 625 people total that go to, to and from, so Wilsonville going to there and they're coming back, Oak Grove, Happy Valley, and Milwaukee. 625 total people. Census data from 2023, 1.4% of Wilsonville residents 16 or older commute to work using public transit. So let's take 625, and let's say that those are just Wilsonville residents going up there. We've got about nine people riding this thing up there for all that risk that we're exposing ourselves to. I have no further questions.
Councillor Denwell.
Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to state, because I did miss the second budget meeting and the following council meeting, I was the individual who initially brought up my concerns about safety with Clackamas Town Center. And without going into detail, I did that for very personal reasons and my own personal experience. And I do stand by that. So when I came back and I had the opportunity to review both the second budget meeting and the council meeting that followed, just besides significant disappointment, I also started asking myself a lot of questions. And one was, how did we get to this point? And so, you know, Dwight, I respectfully emailed you today and asked a question regarding stiff. And, you know, we had a dialogue back and forth specifically about what is expected. But I do want clarification. I do want to speak some clarification. Unless something has happened today in Salem, at this point, you know, based upon what I saw on the YouTube replay of the LOC legislative update on Friday, and also their Friday bulletin, it sounds like it's not even at a bill, the Trip 25 is not even as a bill. It's still in a lot of consideration, and there's a lot of changes made. So there is no guarantee that we're going to have that increase. And also, Oregon Public Broadcasting actually had a significant piece that came out speaking specifically about the fact that the House Republicans are proposing cutting services and not hiking taxes because there's some significant, there's some significant gaps in road upkeep and the Abernathy Bridge, funding shortfalls and all of that. So I don't believe that there's any guarantee that there will be an 80% increase in stiff. It's because it requires a 3/5 majority, wherever we end up with. I mean, would you agree with that? There's no guarantee. There's optimism that we will get there, but there's no guarantee, and something may get negotiated down.
I would agree, but we weren't banking on that at all.
Right, right. So then I also, one of the things that I, I was asking myself, because I was on council when the Transit Master Plan was approved. And I actually was absent the night that it was voted on. I likely would have voted yes anyway, just saying. But I went back to the June 19 presentation that Kelsey made, along with the Jared Walker and the two consultants, Jared Walker and Associates in Enviro Issues. And they went into a lot of depth. And one of the things that struck me, and I'm still asking myself questions about, is when Michelle from Jared Walker and Associates spoke, what she said is that they have the tabling events, and she spoke about that extensively. And she said, what we really heard pretty all around in both the survey and workshop is that people wanted weekend services on Saturdays and Sundays. And they're looking for later service and easier service seven days a week. And she also provided two, four, seven different route options. And all of them, except for Route D, all were from the actual, their own suggestions and their own, based upon what they saw in their master plan requirements or recommendations. One of them was the customer service center. And, but they also had Wilsonville, Wallerton, Tigard, and also shortening the time between the different routes. But the one thing that struck me was that on Route D, which was one of the routes, she said, this is very new. This is really an idea that SMART staff have been generating and growing for multiple years. So this was the only one that was a recommendation. Can you specifically provide me why that is the route that you chose as opposed to? Because she was heavily promoting Route B, which went to Tigard, and talked about, she talked about Bridgeport and even how it would connect to PDX Metro, Barber Boulevard, and even Yam Hill County. Can you give me some background as to why the choice was to go to Route D versus increasing the Saturday and Sunday coverage? Can you give me the justification or what your thought process was on why you chose that route?
All right, yeah, sure. Just as far as the Saturday and Sunday service, looking at that and the overall cost of providing that service, which would be bore by SMART. So you're looking at, you know, roughly two to maybe $2.5 million annually. And the FTEs, which have become a topic here, would probably be in the neighborhood of, I figured, somewhere between six and eight FTEs in order to add the weekend service. And again, like I said, the cost of that would be bore by SMART or the city of Wilsonville. And so when we started to look at the other options, the Tigard option, which still is likely to happen, will likely be paid for by SMART because we cannot duplicate, TriMet will not pay us to duplicate a route that they already have. And so right now, we go to To Walleton, and someone can transfer to a bus onto Tigard Transit Center from there. And so if we decided to run that service from, say, To Walleton to Tigard Transit Center, again, that cost would fall upon SMART to do so. And so when we started to parse through all of the information, all of the different destinations, we started to a process of elimination. Portland was one of the destinations that scored highly. Again, it would duplicate what TriMet... Again, it would duplicate what TriMet is already doing and therefore would not be eligible for regional coordination funds. And so, Clackamas Town Center Service, or Oregon City, or however you want to look at it, checked more of those boxes, and it got us to a point where about 90% of the cost of that service is being paid for by, by TriMet. Understanding that the Transit Master Plan survey said that the, not only was it weekend service, but they were desirous of a service that took them outside of Wilsonville. And so, it's, how do you eat an elephant? You eat it one bite at a time, and so, that's what, what our goal is, is we're, we're looking at, what can we do? What is the low-hanging fruit? And for us, the partnership with ODOT, the partnership with Clackamas County, the partnership with Washington County, partnership with Ride Connection, everybody was all in on this particular service. So, it just seemed to make, make sense.
Thank you, and I appreciate your feedback on that. Let me just close and say that I do still have significant concerns about the CTC route. And I'm, I wish, I, you know, looking back, I wish that there had been a bit more due diligence on the safety side of it that had been looked into, and it's not any type of racial profiling or demographic profiling or income profiling. It just, does stand by my own personal experience, and, you know, and that is why I brought it up, and I do still stand, stand by it. So, I, but I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I have any further questions? Okay. Do we have anybody on Zoom, any chance?
Real quick, Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
Just to kind of respond to, a little bit more to what Counselor Dunwell was saying. I'm part of a small, a coalition of small providers, which includes the city of Sandy, city of Canby, Malala, and then Clackamas County runs service up to Mount Hood. And when this was brought to my attention, I contacted my colleague over in Sandy, her name actually happens to be Andy from Sandy, she's the transit director there. And I said, you started a service from Sandy to Clackamas Town Center about a year ago, which I'm aware of, and I, and I think I mentioned at the first budget meeting that our service will tie in nicely with that service. And I said, did you happen to, you know, get a lot of, you know, feedback on crime? And she said, oh, Dwight, you, you don't know the half of it. She says, I, I, you know, was getting nothing but, you know, people concerned about crime. And I said, how did that work out? She said, well, the crime never materialized, but now it's homeless. So, she said, they shifted because, again, the crime never materialized in Sandy. And I'm not saying that, you know, that necessarily would be our experience, but she said, when that didn't work, she said, they shipped it over to homeless, and, and so now, they want to make sure that that service isn't bringing homeless people into, into Sandy. And she assured me, she says, we're not experiencing any problems on that service at all. So, that's just, you know, just an example. Yeah.
So, now we'll hear from people who wish to testify. Oh, we do have one on Zoom. Okay. We'll first hear from someone on Zoom, Garrett Pryor.
Yes, hi, Mayor. Members of council, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Garrett Pryor. My address is on record. I ask you tonight to pass a city budget that continues our commitment to our national award-winning SMART Transit, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the development of our town center. I'd also like to support our continued Boone's Ferry Messenger. It's an essential piece of our community communication, recording our history, and our world-class library staff. Now, to the facts about what we were just discussing, the transit service, SMART is an essential service in our community, serving families of all incomes, abilities, and ages. A fact about transportation and safety is that the most criminal element that comes into our community is through vehicles driving to and from I-5. As former community development director in the town next to a highway, this was always the concern that I worked on most with law enforcement. Also, when our community faces the daily backlog of cars on our streets because of the highway, I fear that this is when we're going to see a person walking or biking, struck and killed by a car, or vehicles trying to swerve around and drive quickly onto other streets to get to a better place in line. Finally, heightening fear about buses or transit and outsiders bringing crime has been a long racist history in our country. When I hear about people raising these fears, I'm always reminded of the narrative sewn by white nationalists post-integration. I'll finally say that this bus line here, when I was, worked for the city of Tuallaton, who it will serve most, when I heard about their need to connect over to the Clackamas Town Center and to the Veterans Hospital in West Lynn, is veterans. And as we've just celebrated and remembered, our Memorial Day, I want to think about these people and their connection to medical services from Wilsonville to Kaiser Hospital to the Veteran Hospital who will be served by this bus line. Thank you for your comments and consideration.
Thank you. Christopher Daniel?
My name is Christopher Daniel. I'm a Wilsonville resident. My address is on the card. Good evening, Mayor and Counselor. Let's get right to it. The city's planning on spending $1.3 million on a new SMART bus route to Clackamas Town Center for just 19 riders. That's not satire, that's 19 riders from your own document, 2023 Wilsonville Transit Master Plan, page 144. Do the math, 1.3 million divided by 19 people, $68,400 per rider. For that kind of money, we could buy each other, buy everyone Teslas, throw in a free year of car washes, and still have enough for Spotify Premium and weekly Dutch Brothers. And yet, this is being pitched as a transit expansion? No, this is a chauffeur service disguised as public infrastructure. Let's not forget that less than 3% of Wilsonville residents use a SMART bus system today, and many of those are high school kids hopping on for a free ride home. So, why are we bending over backwards to launch a new brand, a brand new line for a sliver of 3%? Is there a new nail salon or a Boston pub opening at the Clackamas Town Center we should know about? Because I can't understand the fixation on driving 19 people there at luxury rates. It'd be far, far less cost of, cost effect, it would be more cost-effective to give out Uber vouchers to community members. To top it off, it isn't just expensive, it's staff-heavy. We're talking about three drivers, two full-time staff members at the transit station, that's five salaries for a handful of riders. This plan is wasteful, risky, and completely out of touch. Do the right thing and shut this down before it rolls.
Thank you. Roger Font?
I'm not back about Boone's Bridge. I'm a little disturbed about what I hear here tonight. Basically, this group is the Board of Directors of a city business. $228 million budget, $27 million in transit. You're a public transit business. It's a service. It's not a for-profit business. There are profitable ways to get transportation. You can buy a car, you can use Uber, Lyft, but if you don't have that, you use public transit. The new SMART route is a good idea, and it's something that you should take advantage of. It would be inconceivable for you to turn this down and expand your business, $27 million transit business, to add this service. If you are a private company, your stockholders would fire all of you if you didn't approve Act like Board of Directors. Logic, not fear, not personal opinion, not what I read in the bathroom.
Thank you. Mr., excuse me, Machiko Walton, and I apologize if I got.
Nope, you did it perfect.
Okay.
Thank you. Hello, my name's Machiko Walton, my address is on record. Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm taking this opportunity to present my opposition to adding a SMART bus line between the Clackamas Town Center and Voila. Two of my concerns are the following. First, rapid transit to Clackamas already exists from Wilsonville. It simply requires taking the number two bus to the Tuallaton Park and Ride, transferring it to Oregon City, and ending at the Town Center. I see no reason to create another line for convenience, be it free, time-saving, or creating bus-on-shoulder extension. With ridership on the decline, I'm concerned with the sustainability of this addition. Secondly, crime. My family and I moved to Wilsonville in June of 2018 so our son could attend high school. When we moved here, Wilsonville was a much different community. There was minimal graffiti, and any panhandlers or peddlers on our off-ramps were sparse. Certainly, there were no trashed-out RVs camping in our city, adding to the already deteriorated appearances of vacant lots and properties surrounded by fences such as fries, cherries, and a theater that sits empty. In seven short years, the decline is obvious. I feel less safe to shop after dark going to and from my car and employ a much higher level of situational awareness overall. It's no wonder that local social media postings reflect families who will be leaving, quote, "once our children are out of school," end quote. What I wonder, however, is why you would want to funnel potential crime into our city from the most crime-infested area in Clackamas County. I encourage everyone in this room to visit clackamas.us/sheriff/stats, which shows that the areas surrounding Clackamas Town Center and the Clackamas Promenade have the highest public reported crimes in the county. These crimes range from assault, harassment, theft, drugs, and sex offenses, to name a few. Deputy-initiated calls were equally the highest as well. There is no other area in our county that has such numbers. Given this magnitude, why would you want to bring that problem here to our community to include our marginalized groups, our children, and our seniors? The existing solution involves two bus changes for a nominal fee rather than one line with a few stops right to Wilsonville. Criminals prefer the easiest option. Your role as council members and as mayor is to promote the safety of our community and provide for financial stability. I do not believe that creating another transit line when one already exists is in our best interests, particularly regarding crime. I ask that you please reconsider your vote on this matter in your passage of the 2526 budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Knapp?
Tim Knapp, 11615 Southwest Jamaica, Wilsonville, for, I've lost track, 38, 39, 40 years, something like that. We budget every year using a budget committee that includes equal numbers of citizens and elected officials. There's a process by which each department brings their budget proposal forward through the city manager, and it's all presented to the budget committee. It is a complex process and a complex document. We set goals and we budget to try to move us forward, to try to meet those goals in a reasonable and practical way every year. The reality is that we have many different people in Wilsonville with different needs and different priorities. The fact is that I personally, and probably you personally, will never use every public service that the city provides. But different services are used by different of our citizens, and we need to be sensitive and understanding about what those situations are that might require them to use some service that maybe I don't use, or maybe you don't use very often. Transportation is one of those. We are a growing community. We have a lot of jobs here. We have people here that don't work in Wilsonville, however, and we have a lot of students that are involved with Clackamas Community College. We have veterans that need to access the medical facilities on that side of town. We have the city service, excuse me, the county services at Oregon City that are used by many different people at many different times. There are a lot of different reasons why people need to travel there. Maybe not you, maybe not you now, maybe you at some point in the future. I don't know. If one of us becomes more incapacitated and unable to function on our own, then we should not be cut off from all of our neighboring cities and services just because we are worried or afraid. So, I don't subscribe to the fear side of it. I don't hide under the bed when there's a storm. I don't wear a tinfoil hat because Voyager has moved beyond the universe and is possibly communicating with some alien things. And I don't set my life by worrying about crime. I've shopped at Clackamas Town Center, and I've never had any problems. I also have gone to the county offices frequently. We need to be able to provide the services for the full range of our citizens, and we will learn to deal with how to respond if there are problems in appropriate ways in the future. Thank you.
Doris Whaler?
I've lived here for 60 years, back to when the population was 800 people. So, I've seen a lot that's happened at the city over the number of years. Our early city councilors did a great job of laying out the city so our industrial lands are kept in the, in the northwest corner. Boone's Ferry Park Memorial and Town Center Parks were great decisions. Using the Willamette River as a water source was very controversial, but ended up to be a wise decision. Keeping the prison off of Damish Hill was a struggle, but today it is properly located. We needed bus service for getting around Wilsonville, so Wilsonville Rapid Area Transit, named Wort after our frogs, was created and later changed to SMART. Some of the decisions made by more recent councils have not been good ones. One example is West Commuter Rail, which opened in February of 2009. My husband and I were passengers on its inaugural run. The city had high hopes for ridership, but sharing freight tracks has limited schedule availability. The cost is high, as we pay at least a half a million dollars a year to TriMet just for the privilege of having Wes. Ridership is still minimal, and Wes continues to be a financial drain on our city. Now, SMART wants to extend free bus service to Clackamas Town Center. There are plenty of statistics about heavy crime, which we've heard tonight. What I haven't heard are statistics saying that people that live here in Wilsonville want this service. I urge you to think twice about passing a budget using stiff funds to hire five full-time employees to run a bus to Clackamas and to staff the Transit Center. Tonight, you will be making a seminal decision to expose Wilsonville residents to foreseeable and predictable crime. I think you should think twice about whether this council wants to be remembered for instituting this bus service to a high-crime area. Thank you.
Thank you. Tristan Rowland?
Hello, I'm Tristan Rowland, and my address is 30560 Southwest Route Street, Wilsonville. I'm a political science major, and I like empirical evidence, not anecdote evidence. So, in the interest of logic, which Counselor Cunningham, you don't seem too comfortable with, I'm going to go on, move on to real statistics. So, there's a study by University of Pennsylvania of Los Angeles Rail from 1988 to 2014 from the Department of Criminology, one of the most reputable departments of criminology in the country. I will quote from the conclusion of the study. It says, "Creation and expansion of metro rail in Los Angeles had no impact on crime." So, I keep hearing, I even heard a mention in my meeting with you, Mr. Cunningham, about needles on buses. Now, I have ridden public transit by myself since age 10. I, I don't know if my parents are smart letting me do that, but I, I did. I don't know if my parents are smart letting me do that, but I did, I never, I saw one instance of needles, and it may have been car keys, or something flashy right before I got off, but it never happens. And also, back to empirical evidence, this is fear-mongering. You know, you're, if you look at the evidence done by criminology departments, done by sociology departments, done by political science departments, you can see that increased public transit increases access to jobs, and increased social services decreases crime and does not increase crime. So if you, I mean, you guys are making it sound like Clackamas Town Center is run by Al Capone. I mean, this is what it's sounding like right now. I, I've been there, I've shopped there, it's not like that. I would encourage you to support the poor people in the city, support the working class, and not necessarily even the poor, just people who like to ride buses. Because yes, maybe they are smelly, maybe they are, I don't know, what do you want to call them, socialist? Maybe, maybe they are that, but they sure as hell like to have jobs, and you might as well try to get them to a place and make sure they can get to a place where they can have jobs. And so I just wanted to bring up some basis statistics. You know, this is Los Angeles. If you're claiming Clackamas Town Center has more crime than Los Angeles, I'm sorry, you're living in a fantasy world. So please, look at the statistics, look at the studies, and thank you very much, City Council. Thank you.
Kate Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm writing to you today as a concerned citizen, and I disagree with the gentleman before me. A few months ago, I welcomed the new City Council and raised some hard questions, asking how each of you see yourselves better serving the interests and needs of residents, visitors, businesses, and local employees over the next two to five years. And I'm hoping that my message is still resonating with you as it relates to Wilsonville's livability and economic prosperity. Tonight, I'm wanting to address concerns I have after observing the May 7 proposed fare-free Smart Bus between Wilsonville and Clackamas Town Center as it relates to our fiscal policy and the Wilsonville Master Plan. But first, let me be clear, I'm very friendly as far as Wilsonville commuter city. I rode buses from high school, the first one on before the Macs ever drove all through high school, Bus 40 to the Transit Center to downtown Portland, four years in a row. First one off, last one off, and I understand the whole commuter situation, but however, more concerning is that after listening to what is being proposed based on a Transit Master Plan through Transit's outreach, I heard the words, "The perception of crime doesn't determine the route." But what about whether it pencils out in terms of the Wilsonville ridership demand? So if we just go with the statistics of it, looking into the 2023 census data, as everyone that Counselor Cunningham and Dunwell have brought to our attention here, there were less than 3% of Wilsonville workers aged 16 on using public transit to commute, and a smaller fraction of riders representing seniors and persons with disabilities. So it appears that, just from my perception, again, this is personal, that we're creating a demand for ridership not based on Wilsonville resident ridership, but based on a survey from residents expressing that Clackamas Town Center is one of the top destinations. So my questions are three. What ridership numbers and analysis has Transit Smart proposed with Smart Bus Line justifying the amount of butts and seats factoring into a Clackamas Town Center? I don't see any specific survey results. Are we just reverse-engineering a demand based on an alleged notion that Clackamas Town Center is considered a top destination and winging it with all due respect, the build-it-and-they-will-come strategy? I see that it's a unique opportunity for Wilsonville to tap into multiple transit systems, but the man, the analysis doesn't appear to reflect the needs of Wilsonville residents. Last, what more can this council do to ensure that the proposed Smart Bus Line to Clackamas Town Center realistically meets the needs of Wilsonville residents, visitors, businesses, and local employees ridership and demand? And I'm talking just from analysis, not fear-mongering. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My address, I think you wanted people to list their actual address, is 7725 Arbor Lake Court in Wilsonville. And I'll just share that I had the opportunity to serve as a member of the City Council and as mayor, just to disclose that. And I won't have that opportunity again, I'm gonna have a break from that. But I spent, as some of you have, many, many hours, I know Mayor Knapp did, sitting with city councilors and mayors, and some of the other councilors have as well in this current council, from all of the cities in Clackamas County. And that is a meeting that you hear people talk about all the time called the C4 Meeting, and it's, when the councilors go to the meeting, they are supposed to come back and describe their conversations. And the meetings are recorded. There have been so many hours of meetings, hearing from our fellow cities, our fellow mayors, about the need in their communities to have greater transportation across our region. So that is, that is a serious need in our region that we have, and I believe that's where the concept of expanding transit and developing connected transit with other agencies efficiently really comes from. Because it wouldn't make any sense for each city to have a little transit system and just go to the edge, or try to fund every transit system is driving to Portland or something. So it makes a lot of sense to connect these services. And if you watch the meeting on June 19, 2023, where we had full attendance of our council, and we had a good period of discussion and questions, the consultants don't read the entire report, they leave it to the councilors to read that report, but they were there to answer any questions that were put forward. And there was quite a bit of detail in, I think, four different pages in that Transit Master Plan about this Route D. And my view in being in that meeting and knowing that that was passed in that first hearing, and it was also passed in the second hearing, we did not have full attendance at the second hearing. We had no one testify against that prior to it coming to the City Council, it was at the Planning Commission. And now it is almost two years later, and we're hearing this now. So what I, what I hope is that we take the best use we can of our law enforcement and our sheriff and our social services to make sure that we have a good bus system and that we maintain good law and order. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Russell.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My, for the record, my name is Cynthia Russell, my address is 28615 Southwest Paris Avenue in Wilsonville. Sorry, that felt really dull. So there's been a lot covered, I'm gonna try not to repeat everything, repeat anything. My main point is that I support this new route, I supported it from the beginning. I want to specifically say that I appreciated your comments, that you said you spoke with the chief about crime and concerns that he might have and ways that we might address crime if it comes up. So I appreciate that you shared that, because there's been a lot of discussion about crime, but not a lot of discussion about talking with the police, so I appreciate that you shared that. I also appreciated Tristan's comments about reviewing statistical data and providing that information and reviewing those reports. I, myself, I am a public transit rider, I have been for a decade. I ride Smart routes a few times a week. That is voluntary, it is not a necessity that I ride it, I choose to, and I appreciate it, and I enjoy it. If you haven't ridden Smart before, I'd recommend that you do, and you'll see that it's, it's a very nice ride, it's a very calm ride, especially if you have ridden any of the other transit buses or routes or Wests or anything like that. I prefer Smart over them. So I'm excited for this new route, I will be riding it, so you can count me among the 19 or 20 people that people are saying are gonna be on, you can add me to that list. And I expect that route and expect those buses to operate the same way that the other ones do. I, I don't anticipate that changing, a lot of how that works is how Smart operates and how their drivers are trained. So I, I don't anticipate that changing. Obviously, if it does, then I will voice those concerns at that time. I, I currently, I feel safe riding transit, I ride all different types of transit all the time. I, if I can avoid dealing with other drivers on the road, I will do that. One thing that I feel like hasn't really been discussed is that this route on 205 can also help alleviate some of that traffic. I've commuted on 205 before, it is awful, I do not enjoy it. So if this can take some of those people out of those cars and onto the buses, even if it's just between, even if they're getting to Wilsonville, if it's just between Clackamas and Oregon City, that can help that. So for people who need or want to drive, then there will be less people on the road for that. In addition to that, it helps alleviate emissions, which is what public transit does. I am at time, so thank you for letting me speak on this.
Thank you. Jeffrey Zundel, Zundel, excuse me.
Hello, my name's Jeff Zundel, I am a resident of Wilsonville at 11729 Southwest Oslo. I grew up in the city. I remember Wilsonville area rapid transit in my childhood, and it was, it was a fixture. I rode my bike all around the city and watched the city grow. I admittedly haven't been here as long as some of the other people in the audience, but I've appreciated seeing Wilsonville grow into the city it is now, which is a city that's more connected to the rest of the area around it. I haven't lived in Wilsonville all that time, I left Wilsonville after I graduated from high school, I went to college, but not immediately. For a while, I rode the 96 line up to Portland every day to go up to university, and I had a great experience on that. And yeah, I saw some uncomfortable people here and there, but that's society, that's the world that we live in, but we're not gonna get rid of that by getting rid of transit. There's, the people, people live in the world with us, and we need to be comfortable with that and address the problems where we see them, such as through our police force. I appreciate the councilmembers who are critical and are asking good questions, these are really important questions that we need to ask. Is this gonna bring crime into our city? We should absolutely be asking that. We should be asking that to our police chief as well. Should we be asking how much fear this is gonna generate? Should that be the main chorus that we're kind of driving after, or should we be looking instead at the opportunity that this brings? How many of my neighbors are in that 20% of the senior citizens of this city that need to get up to Kaiser on a regular basis and maybe can't drive, or are becoming less and less able to drive? How many of the people of our city that we heard in the earlier presentation are disabled and need to get to their medical services? How many of our youth that we saw is greater than most of the rest of the region around us need to get up to the educational opportunities at places like Clackamas Community College or via the Green Line to the other universities in the area? These are opportunities. Yes, there's some risk about connecting with the world around us, we happen to live in a great city, but that doesn't mean we should try to make it an island. We should look at the opportunity that this brings, acknowledge the risks that come with it, and try to address those risks in the right way possible. So I urge you to accept this and drive after this opportunity and connect Wilsonville with the region around us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle Seal.
My name is Michelle Seal, and you do have my address on record. I've lived here in our community since 2008. I actually was involved in the Wilsonville community starting in 1998 as I coached basketball, excuse me, at the Wilsonville High School for seven years. I've also served on the Wilsonville Little League Board for six years, and my oldest of three boys graduated from Wilsonville High School last year, so I feel like I'm very invested in our community. While trying to wrap my mind around the proposed free Smart Bus routes to Clackamas Town Center, I asked myself why we are trying to turn our city into Portland. A suburb by definition, residential neighborhoods typically located on the outskirts of a city, characterized by lower population density, predominantly single-family homes, and a car-centric lifestyle. We have many people that have left the urban, crime-filled areas of Portland to live a suburban lifestyle. We are not Portland, and we don't want to be. Perhaps more concerning, with all due respect, the proposal is being spearheaded by Mr. Breschier, who according to the city website, has had an impressive career working on transit issues in San Diego, Chicago, Los Angeles, and Las Vegas. Wilsonville is not like, or does not want to be, any of those large cities, nor do our residents have the desire for an expansive and extensive mass transit system. It is my understanding the Smart Transit Director is not an elected official. That means two very significant things. Again, with all due respect to Mr. Breschier, he could be crafting policy and not even live in our community and experience the consequences of the policy. Second, if we do not like his policy as citizens, we cannot vote him out of his position. Where is the accountability? I also think it's a little ironic, talking about jobs and all those kinds of things, that we sit at a time when we did not allow Home Depot to come in here and provide lots of jobs, and there are literally dozens of empty buildings for sale and for lease in this town. Last night at 6:03, I sent an email to 60 friends, neighbors, and community members alerting them to this discussion tonight. In the last 24 hours, I have received responses by more than double that number of people. They all strongly oppose this budget increase in any kind of free transportation or conduit to the Clackamas Town Center. Not one response was in support of this. There are a lot more people, including myself, paying attention to what is going on to Wilsonville recently, especially after seeing the end product of a $36 million bridge project that closed one of our three west-east routes for 16 months and didn't increase the number of lanes on the road in front of a new primary school, why sidewalks and bike lanes take up approximately the space of three lanes of traffic. An example of a comment I received, "Quite frankly, the city doesn't seem to know what they are doing with our tax dollars and seem they just don't care what the actual people of the city want. To think these people can just waste money like this without doing research is incomprehensible. If the council is set to take this to a vote, at the very least, do a proper analysis, including crime rates, and let the people vote on it. Let's make sure we're serving the citizens of Wilsonville and making them a priority and not the citizens of other communities." One last thing, if I had a month to reach out to the citizens of this town, in one month, I would have 5,000 signatures for you, strongly disapproving of this plan, and I doubt that you could get that many signatures in approval. Thank you.
Robert Miller.
Hello, I'm Robert Miller, and I live at 6780 Southwest Primrose Court. I've been a resident of Wilsonville for two years, and prior to that, I had 30 years in West Lynn, in Old Town, at home down on the river, really nice. But we moved here because this city looked like a good city with high tech and, you know, just a nice community. I'm concerned about this light rail system, like many others here, about crime. My wife's really uptight about that. She will not go to Clackamas Town Center anymore at all because of the high crime rates over there, all sorts of things. I have a lot of experience with government projects, partly because I worked for State of Oregon General Services for 10 years, and then went on my own to manage other big projects like the Sundome, not Sund, the Sundome in Yakima and renovation of Goodwill Headquarters here in Portland, about three city blocks. But what I'm gonna suggest to you guys, I know TRIMID is a big deal in the Portland metro area, and they're not going away, and they're offering you a lot of money, a lot of funding to build this. I would suggest, if you do go ahead with the project, you only do part of it. Go from here to Oregon City, and let the rest of it be put off for a later date, and see if, in other words, you're buying time to get the Clackamas Town Center, that whole area, much improved with lower crime rates. But I think if you do too much too fast, you may regret it. One thing I haven't heard anybody mention is, if crime does go up here due to the light rail, well, we taxpayers are gonna get hit with the bill for additional police in this city. You know, right now... You know, right now, you have minimal police, and in the evening, it goes to Clackamas County with the contract that you have with them. So, you know, I'm like a lot of people. I mean, there's security, but there's also the reality of how much money are we gonna pay as taxpayers? And, you know, quite honestly, um, I do a lot of investing, and, um, this year is not gonna be a great year for most people in terms of, you know, if you invest in the stock market, that kind of thing. So I wish you would, um, take those things into consideration, and, um, best of luck.
Thank you. I know, I know. Thank you. Raymond, I'm gonna get it wrong. Nassimo? I can't read the writing. I apologize.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Raymond Noclerio, and my name is on the speaker card. I've been a Wilson resident, Wilsonville resident short of a year. My topic tonight is crime and public safety. After reviewing the May seventh and May thirteenth Budget Committee meeting, I took it upon myself to review the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Crime Dashboard. I have trouble with my vision. I'm a type-two diabetic, so bear with me. Took it upon myself to review the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Crime Dashboard while taking into consideration the fact that the proposed SMART bus line to Clackamas Town Center did not include a crime impact analysis or risk assessment during SMART's proposal. Where I come from, crime and public safety very much factor into the quality of life experience, especially for senior citizens like myself who don't drive. I see the crime statistics for Wilsonville, and we are on a steep trajectory. When I heard that SMART Transit included one single violence factor of arguing over a dime by proposing a fare-free bus between Winstonville, Wilsonville, and Clackamas County Center as a solution to prevent crime, it made me question why other ways in which public safety was not explored and included in the report. For decades, I wrote public transportation, one of the busiest cities on the East Coast. In addition, my personal experience was working as a New York State Corrections Officer, where my personal safety and those of my fellow officers were dependent on planning for violent situations that might arise. What I learned the most, not only as a private citizen, but as a trained corrections officer, is that it's not money that humans fight over. Most fights broke out due to overcrowding and maintaining territory. My fingers used to work years ago. Take into consideration that this unique added destination that accounts for seventy-seven percent of all county property crimes. How do Wilsonville seniors like me, I can't, I'll leave the papers.
Yeah, that's fine. Just submit it as part of the testimony. Thank you. At this point, Council, I need a motion to extend our hearing past ten. I propose till eleven o'clock.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to expend, extend our meeting till eleven o'clock for an additional sixty minutes past ten, past ten P.M., but I would ask from nine fifty-five till ten P.M. that we take a five-minute break.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I'll just assume the five-minute break is built into that motion. Okay, any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, five-minute break at, uh, we'll resume at ten o'clock. Okay, our City Council is back in session at ten oh two. The next speaker is Miranda Dunn.
Hello, my name is Miranda Dunn, and my address is on the card. I came tonight to encourage the City Council to pass the budget. Um, in particular, I know transit has been talked about a lot. Um, you know, this past week, I celebrated my thirtieth birthday, and we went to sushi in West Lynn, and it would have been lovely to have a bus to take. Um, so personally, there are opportunities I see for myself riding this bus. I've also heard a lot tonight about criminality, and that's something that really matters to me personally because I'm a correctional nurse. And so I work with people who would be described as criminals every day. I provide health care. I, I have people come to prison, and I'm one of the first faces that they see, and they cry, and they're sad, and they are just humans with hearts. And I know that it is easy to be scared, but if you saw these people as the people they truly are, I think we could really change the way we talk. Because the conversation I heard tonight just lacked so much humanity that I came home from a three-week-old baby to come give this testimony pleading to you guys to please have hearts when you speak. Um, the other thing that I find really interesting is we keep talking about all this crime in Clackamas and making sure that criminals don't get on the bus as if we don't have a SMART station at the prison, as if the people leaving prison don't take SMART transit. They do. Um, and so I find that, I don't know, that dichotomy to just be very interesting given the conversation. I also have seen how much the prison can do to rehabilitate people and also the opportunities it provides our city. You know, for me, that is my employment. That's how I afford a house in this city. It's a blessing to both live and work in this city. And so, yeah, I just hope we can all be kinder humans, um, considering our fellow people. And I know that there are challenging behaviors around property crime that we want to be mindful of, and I'm so glad that we've reached out to our sheriff and we're talking to police about how to address that behavior. But I really want us to be careful when we talk about the humans that would be using this transit, because they have transit needs too. Um, and I'm comfortable riding a bus with them, just like I'm comfortable going to work every day and providing health care to them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, that's all the slips I have. Is there anyone in, on Zoom or?
Sir? Look over here, there's a sheet you can fill out. Yes. Did you fill it out? Yeah. Chris Heidman. Do you have a Chris Heidman?
Yep, I have that under a different subject.
Yeah, could you move me over to this column, please?
Sure.
No, just, yes.
Steve Van, Vanvicker?
Wetchel.
Sorry, sorry. Steve Wetchel.
Greetings. I'm Steve Van Wetchel, living down in Old Town, and you have my address on the card. Uh, I'm here tonight because a friend asked me to come yesterday, and I frankly didn't know much about any of this until I came tonight. So the information I have is basically what I've heard from tonight. And a couple of thoughts that I had is that, uh, number one, I'm hearing from Mr. Breshear is that the vast majority of the funding that would be funding these positions isn't coming out of the Wilsonville city budget. It's the stiff and all that state stuff. I'm not even gonna begin to pretend that I understand how any of that works, but it sounded like the vast majority of it is not Wilsonville-oriented. It's coming from TRIMET and so forth. So the drain on the city budget, I severely question the people that are concerned on that matter, because it doesn't sound like it's that, coming that way to me. The other point I wanted to make was that, I understand we're connecting with fourteen different, uh, entities, whatever you wanna call it, at the Clackamas Town Center. Well, my history, forty years working with families and kids and so forth, is that if you have that many people, there's gonna be some loud mouths in there somewhere. Uh, and if there, have a group of fourteen connections and so forth there, I think I would have heard a lot more about crime problems and all that kind of stuff from already existing people that are connecting there already. I'm, I've never heard any of that, so I kinda just, uh, I just kinda forget that whole side of it as well. And the other part on that was that somewhere in the United States, I am sure, they have faced this exact same question and problem. This is not something that's brand-new. Wilsonville's just happening to come up with it right now. I think if you do, if the problem comes up, I think there's a lot of opportunity to reach out, research, and work with other communities, find out how they've handled it, either through the transit authorities or through the sheriff and the, and the legal side of things. Maybe just having a sheriff ride along on the, on the right or something other. I mean, there's lots of other options rather than just yes or no. Uh, one gentleman mentioned maybe there should be kind of a, uh, putty in part of it and then putting in part of it. I mean, there's a lot of different options rather than just blank yes and no. Uh, so I don't think there's a budget problem. I don't think there's a prime, crime problem, or we would heard about it, and I would strongly encourage you to encourage, uh, and vote for the motion. Thank you.
Paul Froen.
Hi, you guys have all my information on the card, so I won't go through that.
Are you, uh, what's your address?
It's on the card. Ninety-four sixty-three Southwest Talkman. I'm a twenty-plus-year resident of Old Town, and I've been here a long time. I've testified before you before, and it's gonna be somewhat of the same thing as, you've heard it a little bit before, but you guys are not listening to what the people of this city are saying. I spend a lot of time canvassing in this city for political issues and stuff, and I'm not here, the things that I'm hearing here tonight are things that people are upset about. And I go to doors, I don't just go to one, you know, political party door or another political, I go to all of them. And I, I keep hearing things that here, what I'm hearing here about this transit budget, it's not just the, the issue of going to Clackamas Town Center, it's the whole Clackamas, it's the whole transit budget. Does a city this size need to have the kind of transit budget that we have? I don't think we do, and I don't think the residents here would support that if you found a way, which I've encouraged you to before, is to find ways to get a better, um, feedback from, from all the, all your constituents. This is not an issue of what was just talked about here about who's funding this. We shouldn't be taking money from everywhere else. It all comes back to it's our money. It's not whether it's the city, the state, the county, whatever. It's our money as citizens, and it doesn't matter that it's not coming out of the, the Wilsonville city budget. It's our money. We're spending here, what, nine thousand dollars per, per resident here to run government in Wilsonville, Oregon? I don't want that nine thousand dollars of my money spending that kind of much, much money for, for government in my city. So I want you, I, the point I'm trying to say is the, you know, that whether it's a crime issue or whatever it is, it's, you're not listening to what I'm hearing when I go out into the community, and I would encourage you to find some way to do that. It was brought up by a couple of people tonight, and I wanna strongly encourage you to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris Heideman.
Evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Chris Heideman, two eight three two nine Southwest Paris Avenue. Been here going on ten years now. So I guess anecdotes are all the thing today, so that really works. We're gonna skip out on the data, and we're just gonna share anecdotes. So my special needs adult daughter, she's born deaf, delayed development, she and I go to the REI Resupply Store in Clackamas County every couple of months, 'cause we gotta go get more camping gear, right? Never had any issue. It's just fine. Also, another second anecdote, I would love a comprehensive mass transit system. Some speaker claimed that no one in Wilsonville wants that. Okay, I want that. I think that'd be fantastic. I think it'd be fantastic to take the, to take a shot, to somehow get to, say, PDX faster, and if this allows me to do that, excellent. If this allows us to get to Clackamas Town Center, excellent. Now, about the crime, there's more going on there. We have a counselor saying things like, "All that risk, is it worth it?" We have people bringing up the empty buildings, the fries, the theaters, the RVs in the Safeway, as if that has anything to do with whether or not crime moves via transit. Nobody has said a word showing that crime moves via transit, that crime is going to come here or is likely to come here from, from Clackamas Town Center. One, one person said something about the, the trend in crime in Wilsonville. Well, guess what? It's down twenty percent twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, fifty-one thousand crime per thousand residents to forty-one crimes per thousand residents, fifty-one-point-three to forty-one crimes per thousand residents, right? So it's going down, it's going in the right direction, and it's going down a lot. So we hear all of those things. We gotta ask ourselves, is this all hyperbole? I'm against this thing, so I'm gonna go find reasons to be against it, whether or not those are actually valid? Is it xenophobia? Am I afraid of people that are other than me, a different culture, they eat different foods, they, they speak different languages? Or is it racism? Do I really just not want those people around me? Ask yourselves why you're against this thing. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else on Zoom? I think that's everybody. Oh, fill out a card.
Can I come up? Did you fill out a slip? No. Yeah, we'll just fill out the slip real quick. Okay.
If anybody else wishes to testify, can you fill up the slip so we, make sure we get to everybody?
Good evening and almost morning. It's gonna be pretty soon. I'd just like to say, first of all, I appreciate, um, what everybody, I mean, everybody's input on this very emotional, um, controversial topic. I mean, everybody's got a different opinion here. And to me, it would be a crime if it's not considered with all the, I mean, there's been at least as many people come up here and oppose this as support it, and that's just the people who've shown up tonight. So I'd ask somebody here, how many, I mean, have you guys, how many emails have you gotten from people opposing this thing? Does anybody know that? I mean, approximately?
I don't know.
Okay. So, I mean, it's, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even have known about this if, if I had all the time that I have now, um, not working. Uh, and I'm trying to get word out to my friends and things, but it's, it's tough, and it's tough to get people to commit time, and, you know, it's, and I appreciate the time that everybody's taken to come here tonight, but I, uh, one of the things that was brought up, uh, one of the ladies that came up here suggested something less. Why can't there be some sort of compromise in a situation like this? Take some baby steps. Take some baby steps. I just please ask you to consider everybody's input on this and come up with some kind of compromise, whether you table it and just kind of rethink this thing and do something less. I'd sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all, I think, of our public testimony. Is there any need by a counselor to ask for additional information of either the people that testified or staff at this time? Counselor Dunwell?
Mayor, thank you. I do not have any other questions, but I would like a couple of comments. I assume that we're going to take this to a vote now at this point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
After we close the public hearing.
Will we do the discussion after we close the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you all.
So this, this is the time if there's any further questions.
Of staff or any of the testimony?
Okay, then I have no further questions.
Anybody else at this time? Okay, hearing no further questions and everyone having to testify, hereby declare the public hearing closed at 10:17 PM. It is now time for council to consider each resolution. First, we will consider Resolution Number 3198, Resolution Declaring the City's Election to Receive State Shared Revenues. Is there any general deliberation? I mean, this says we talked before.
Yeah, and just to clarify, because I want to make sure it's right, is that the 3198 is the city's eligibility to receive, and then 3199 is our election to receive? So the first one is our eligibility.
Excuse me, our eligibility to receive the city's election to receive state shared revenues. Thank you. Do I have a, is there any further discussion before we have a motion? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 3198?
I move to approve Resolution 3198.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Council President Barry and seconded by Counselor Shavlon to approve Resolution Number 3198. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no further discussion or commentary, I will call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion passes 5-0. Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 3199?
I move to approve Resolution 3199.
This is, oh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. This has been moved by Counselor Bear, Council President Barry and seconded by Counselor Adam Cunningham to approve Resolution Number 3199, Resolution Declaring the City's Election to Receive State Sharing Revenues. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no, hearing no further discussion or commentary, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. The motion passes 5-0. Next, I will consider Resolution Number 3200, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the budget, making appropriations, declaring the ad valorem tax levy and classifying levy as provided by O.R.S. 310.060, subsection 2, for fiscal year 2025 through 2026, and a resolution declaring the city's eligibility to receive state shared revenues. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 3200?
Mayor, I move to approve the fiscal year 2025 to 2026 proposed budget in the amount of $228,927,800 and levying the full amount of the city general tax rate of $2.520.6.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved by Counselor Barry and seconded by, excuse me, Council President Barry and seconded by Counselor Shavlon. Is there any discussion? Counselor, Counselor Cunningham?
I move to amend the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget by reducing Transportation Department's Smart Transit FTE allocation by four transit drivers and two customer service representatives and revise the total budget amount to $228,435,036.
Okay, is there a second? Well, okay, I just wanted to, is there a second to the amendment proposed?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion. Can you read that back to me again?
It's stated for the record.
Okay, there's a motion to amend and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay.
I'll discuss.
Okay. Counselor Cunningham?
All right, so to address some of the things that were brought up, this is not singularly about crime. There are four different things that I brought up about this plan that are issues. Can you bring that slide up for me? The first point that I am addressing is the crime. There's been talk tonight that it's just pure conjecture. It's the idea that there might be some crime that exists, but there are hard and fast numbers that support my position on the crime in Clackamas Town Center. This document shows the amount of property crime that is committed in those areas. It is in number one place in the entire county. It is a hard and fast data point. You go to the next slide, please. This slide shows the difference, the multiplicative difference between crime that occurs in the Southgate area and the crime that occurs in Wilsonville. We have eight, let's call it seven times as many theft calls that occur there than in the entirety of Wilsonville, almost seven times as many theft reports, five times the amount of trespass calls, 5.6 times the amount of stolen vehicle calls, 5.9 times the amount of recovered stolen vehicles in that area, 12.7 times the amount of robberies that occur, 5.3 times the amount of sex offenses that occur, 15.8 times the amount of drug-related reports that are that are created in that area compared to Wilsonville, and more than 10 times as many disorderly conduct reports that are filed. Crime is not anecdote, it is real. Crime exists. It is the highest amount in the entire county, and we're driving a bus to and from it for free. Next slide, please. This is one of these surveys that was offered, and this was what was shown to council in 2023. If somebody can show me the words Clackamas Town Center on there, I'll take my boot off and I'll eat it right now. Next slide, please. Here's a tabling event that occurred. If anybody can point to the words Clackamas Town Center, I'll eat my boot. Next slide, please. This is the other survey. This is from the Let's Talk Wilsonville site. Nowhere on here do the words Clackamas Town Center, Milwaukee, Oak Grove, Happy Valley appear. I'm not making any of this up. This is an anecdote. This is actual fact. Next slide, please. This is the top 25 commute trips to and from Wilsonville. So if you were to add up down there, way towards the bottom, that 1%, 1% and less than 1%, we got Milwaukee, Happy Valley and Oak Grove, and the total number of trips to and from Wilsonville to commute are about 625. Next slide, please. This is the census data. 1.4% of Wilsonville citizens aged 16 or older that are workers use public transport, transportation to go to and from work. Next slide, please. And that's the transit fund and the five-year forecast that we were given to consider and think about what the future of our city and our budget looks like. These things aren't just conjecture. If you want, if you guys, people requested a, a top cop's opinion on transit. March 5, 2013, K2, Happy Valley, Oregon, the Clackamas County Sheriff said Tuesday he's concerned that the new MAX line is dropping off more than passengers at Clackamas Town Center. It's dropping off crime, too. In the five months since the MAX Green Line first arrived at the Clackamas Town Center, Sheriff Craig Roberts says crime in the surrounding area is up 32% this year, and calls for service are up 56% compared to 2009. Craig Roberts, County Commissioner. This isn't, this isn't fake. There are, there are, there is a mix of studies out there. There are a mix of studies on transit. Some of them show no impact, some of them show an impact. Those things have to be considered. I would ask that we consider, as we consider this, this budget approval, that we consider the idea of whether or not, given, if you can go back to the survey slides, whether or not our citizens were actually given a true and open and transparent voice in this process, or if this was a predetermined decision to create better regional interconnectivity for transit. Because I can't find a shred of data in any of the city's documents that support the idea that this decision was made through a transit master plan and through our outreach and surveying residents and other folks that use our system, and it was one of the top That was a statement made by Director Bashir during the budget meeting, and we made a vote based on that statement, in part. And this is the actual data. This is the actual outreach and the surveys. We have left our citizens' voices behind on this. It was not transparent, it was not open, and we did not respect the will of our citizens in this decision-making process. Therefore, I will not be complicit in creating this transit line.
Finished? Any other comments? Counselor Dunwell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was not present at the second budget meeting, although I was present at the first, and then I was also not present at the following city council meeting. But I do want to say, and I know Director Bashir, I see you in the back, I do want to say that I think SMART is one of the best things about our city. I, I think that it is high value. I think that it's important for our future and that you have been a phenomenal leader in the past. I also had an individual who I have deep respect for remind me that Wilsonville isn't even on a lot of maps. We are a small town suburb. And that what I see is I see a lot of, and this is, you know, I'm beating an old drum here, I see a lot of divisiveness rather than conversation and dialogue, because I do believe we can disagree and we can still break bread together. And I would like to see that continue and not attack and not become personal. And social media is guilty of that. And I would really like to see that come to a stop. So all that being said, do I, with your, you know, please take my compliments and my my true honest feelings to heart. I do love SMART, but I cannot support the Clackamas Town Center route. And I would hope that all of the citizens that, you know, come from a different perspective will respect my, my vote on this and my perspective on this, and that we can all continue to work together because we have a lot of heavy lifting ahead of us as a city. We are, you know, we are in difficult times at a federal level and even at a state level. And divisiveness will only hurt all of us. So let's remember that we are a small town on a map and that there is an opportunity for us to continue to say, whatever happens at the, this evening with this vote, that we can all still work together. And let's find ways to build bridges, even though we may disagree on the specifics, that there is no place for personal attacks, either by our mayor or any of our council members, and that we all come with the best intentions when we come to a budget meeting or we come to a council meeting. I appreciate all of you for being here, and I know it's a late night, so I will close with that.
Any further? Okay, Council President Barry?
Yeah, so I appreciate both your comments. I have a different perspective. I believe that adding the extension to the Westland, Oregon City and Clackamas Town Center route offers a lot more opportunity than it does risk. When I make decisions, I, I look at facts and I try not to base things on fear. I, I look at goals that I'm trying to accomplish. And for me, I'd like to provide as much service as we can at a cost-effective rate for all our citizens, and so I'm supportive of this new route.
So currently, we're having a discussion on the proposed motion to amend the current motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I'll add something real quick. Thank you, Counselor Dunwell, for your comments. I will say that I get passionate about this because I care about the safety of our city, and I want to keep our citizens safe. That's, to me, the number one role of government. However this vote turns out tonight, I can, I look forward to continuing to work with each and every one of you respectfully. The vote will be the vote tonight, and we'll move on to the next issues that we need to move on to. So I want to just keep that in mind as we move forward, and we'll, and we'll move on and continue to work for the betterment of the city.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, there's a motion pending to amend the current motion to approve Council Resolution Number 3200. Sorry, I'm tired at this point. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion to amend has failed 3-2. Okay, so we're back to the current motion that's pending, which is.
The motion to amend failed 3-2.
Right, so we still have this pending motion.
The main motion.
The main motion, I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
So I'd like to get to the discussion of that main motion. So is there any discussion on the main motion? I have some. I want to address the opposition to fully staffing our regional transit center and launching the long-planned route to Clackamas Town Center via SMART. Let's begin with the claim of safety concerns. I've lived here for 17 years. The data and my lived experience suggest that when crime occurs, it's often committed by individuals driving off I-5, targeting vehicles or packages, and then leaving. These aren't transit users. They're using private cars, yet somehow transit gets blamed. This plays into a longstanding and deeply flawed narrative, often referred to as the crime train trope. This trope suggests that transit expansion brings crime, especially when that transit serves working-class or racially diverse communities. But the evidence tells a different story. There is no causal link between increased transit access and increased crime. It's a myth rooted in fear, not fact. In Oregon, we've made transit safety a priority with Senate Bill 1553 that was recently passed a few years back, which enhances legal protections against interference with public transportation. And beyond that, we are witnessing historic declines in crime nationally across the board. Crime overall began to fall in 2023, gained momentum in 2024, and is accelerating that decline in 2025. Personal violence in 2024 and into 2025 is falling faster than at any point in recent history, approaching levels not seen since the 1960s. There's an excellent article by Dr. John Roman titled "Explaining the COVID Violence Spike and the Roaring Decline" that breaks this down. Chief Wurps, our chief, shared it with me when I asked her background about the concerns that have been expressed here tonight. My takeaway is from that article, the hard work of fully-staffed local governments, strong schools, engaged law enforcement, and investment in youth and infrastructure, including transit, has paid off, and it must continue, especially here in Wilsonville, where it has been a true success. So let's be honest, the opposition framed as a safety concern is not only unsupported by data, it risks perpetuated outdated biased fears and delaying vital services. Our regional partners, including Clackamas County and the cities with Our regional partners, including Clackamas County and the cities within it, are relying on our leadership to get this done. Now let's look at the historical context. The Wilsonville-Clackamas Town Center route and the Regional Transit Center have been listed in adopted budgets going back to fiscal year 2022 to '23. I should note, I served on the Budget Committee for four of those cycles. The project was also thoroughly examined and the Transit Master Plan updated, adopted by the previous city council in 2023. That document is available on the city's website. I urge you to review Pages 38, 39, 146, and 147, which specifically covers this route. All this was with public involvement and public communication and input. Now, the public may have chosen not to pay attention, but there's a difference between the public not paying attention and being deprived access to communicate. Typically, in our community, there's a trend that people don't pay attention to what's out there until all of a sudden, something hits the papers. At the June 19, 2023 hearing on the Transit Master Plan update, the plan passed unanimously, 5-0. At the second reading, it passed again, 4-0, with one councillor absent. No concerns about Wilsonville-Clackamas Town Center route and the Regional Transit Center were ever raised, yet they were clearly in the plan. These are also clearly identified in prior budgets. No one on prior budget committees ever raised a concern. At the June 17, 2024 City Council Work Session, staff again presented this route as part of the statewide Transportation Improvement Fund, STIF, planned for biennium 2026 through 2027. No concerns about Wilsonville-Clackamas Town Center route and the Regional Transit Center were ever raised. It should be noted that two of our five current councillors served on that council and were at attendance at the June 19, 2023, and June 17, 2024 meetings. These plans have also been presented to community in many ways over the years. Some of the recent objections raised by some community members and some members of this council seem to be more about politics than sound policymaking. Our community...
Point of order? Decorum, point of order?
I am currently...
Point of order?
No, there is no point of order. Go ahead.
So a point of order supersedes everything else. It is stated, and then the presiding officer decides whether it's well taken.
A member under the rules of decorum will not attack other members' motivations.
Okay. Okay, I will rephrase. Council seems to be more about the current communications by the community, seem more about politics than sound policymaking. Our community deserves better than that. Now let's talk about the fiscal concerns. I've reviewed every city budget from fiscal year 2021 to '22 through fiscal year 2025 through 2026, and I've served on those budget committees. And every one of those years, our city staff, in partnership with city-led Budget Committee, has produced responsible, balanced budgets. And during that time, our transit fund has been consistently strong and stable. In conclusion, this has been years in the making, planning, discussion, support. We're not rushing this. We are implementing a well-vetted, community-informed vision. Transit is not a luxury. It is a lifeline for workers, students, seniors, and families. Refusing to staff key positions and expand service is not fiscally conservative. It's fiscally short-sighted. It leaves residents stranded, businesses underserved, and disproportionately harms those already marginalized. This council has a choice: yield to unfounded fears and divisive politics, or lead with facts, fairness, and a future-focused vision. I believe our community is better served by the latter. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I call the...
Ma'am, I do have one more comment. As a member of this council, I am embarrassed that political motivations continue to be presented by our mayor in an environment like this. We are entitled to our own perspectives and our own opinions without being attacked as if they are politically motivated or ambushed. I am not in a position to be defending any other councillors, but as a city councillor and elected official, I do expect that respect for all of us be always maintained. Political motivations must be set aside in here, and I do not put Councillor Cunningham or any other member of this council in a position where I make an assumption that they're politically motivated, nor do I do that myself. I have my own opinions, and taking those perspectives and those opinions based upon my own data and also my own lived experience, and then the information from other residents of this city, allow me as a councillor to be able to present my own perspective and have my own vote without being attacked or having any other councillor be attacked.
I'll only respond, I think it's appropriate to point out inconsistencies with existing council members that have voted differently in the past, but your position is noted. Is there any other discussion?
I'd like to point out, since we're pointing things out, that I have publicly praised SMART before. I am in support of SMART. I voted two weeks ago to ensure that we enter the fight, to ensure that SMART gets its million dollars from federal funds to fund our transit system. I'm not here to try to defund SMART, I'm not here to try to ruin SMART. This is a separate, specific issue that, as Councillor Dunwell pointed out, I have a different perspective on than you do, and different perspectives than other people do. Based on the testimony today, based on the 12 to 15 emails we got in opposition to this, if we were to go with a quick straw poll on that, the opposition carries the day. Not that that needs to be our deciding factor, this isn't democracy here, this is a representative system. That's fine. But it needs to be very clear that I'm not trying to play a political game here. I have support for SMART, but when I see an issue that could affect our citizens negatively, and I see an issue where our citizens were not part of the conversation in the proper way, and it wasn't fair, open, and transparent, I will raise those issues.
Any further comments or discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those who vote in approving Resolution Number 3200, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
No.
Okay, the motion passes 3-2. Next, we go to our third public hearing regarding Resolution 3201. I'll ask the City Attorney to read the title of this resolution.
I should have been more prepared. Let me flip back to the agenda. Resolution Number 3201, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2024-25. And Mayor, I will also note, since we also have a URA meeting, we probably will need another motion to extend, potentially. So just make sure to watch the time. I will.
All right, I call to order the Wilson City Council Public Hearing on Resolution 3201 at 10:45 PM.
Folks, the City Council will be taking public testimony tonight at this public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. First, staff will present the report. Second, testimony will be asked for by those who wish to testify. And third, council will consider a motion for the resolution. This meeting is being held in person and remotely by Zoom. If you are listening to this meeting remotely, when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press number nine on your telephone if you wish to testify. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the numbers shown on the screen and enter webinar ID number shown on the screen when prompted. When called up to testify, state your full name and address for the record. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the city council, simply indicating you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify as sufficient. Each person will have three minutes to provide testimony. Thank you. And now staff will present the report, if they're still awake.
Catherine Smith? No, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Smith, the city's Assistant Finance Director. Before you this evening is Resolution 3201, which is a budget supplemental for the current fiscal year 2425. As required by local budget law, a notice for this public hearing was published in the Wilsonville spokesman on May 22 of 2025. As outlined in your council packet, this budget supplemental includes unanticipated changes to legal appropriations of $2.3 million, most notably for the Smart Yard expansion, which is funded entirely with grant funding. This project is trending ahead of schedule. This budget supplemental also includes the recording of overhead costs for various capital improvement projects. And that concludes our presentation. We welcome any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Is there any, at this point, is there any person wishing to testify? Okay. Does staff have anything further to add on the record? Okay. The City Council have any additional questions? All right. Hearing no further questions, everyone having testified, I hereby declare this public hearing closed at 10:48 PM. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 3201, Resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2024 to 2025?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 3201.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made by the City Council President Barry and seconded by Councillor Chevlin. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I call for the vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion passes 5-0. Okay, that concludes at 10:49. Well, do I need to, at this point, extend it?
Not yet.
Just so we can keep the agenda moving, there is no city manager's business side.
No legal business either.
Okay, so we're adjourned of the city council meeting at 10:49 PM. Okay. Now we're switching. Are you guys already the power through? Okay. I call to the order the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency for June 2, 2025, at 10:49 PM. Will the City Attorney Recorder please call roll?
Member Chevlin?
Here.
Member Barry?
Here.
Member Cunningham?
Here.
Member Dunwell?
Here.
Chair O'Neill?
Here.
Member Barry, can I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
I submit a motion to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Member Barry and seconded by Member Chevlin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. Is there anybody here that wishes to provide citizen input under the Urban Renewal District? Is there anybody online? Okay, so I'm going to skip that language. The next item is our consent agenda. Will the City Attorney please read the items on consent?
Minutes of the October 7, 2024 Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Okay. Member Barry can have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been approved by Member Barry and seconded by Member Cunningham. The motion to approve the following order of agenda has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes 5-0. Is no new business, no continuing business? Okay. I call to order the Wilsonville Urban Renewal Public Hearing on URA Resolution 353 at 10:51 PM. Folks, the Urban Renewal Agency will be in taking public testimony tonight at this public hearing. The hearing will be conducted in the following manner. Staff will present the report. Testimony will be asked for by those who wish to testify. The agency will consider a motion for the resolution. The meeting is being held in person and remotely by Zoom. If you're listening to the meeting remotely, when the time for public testimony is called, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press star nine on your telephone if you would like to testify. If you're having difficulties with these instructions, you may call the numbers shown on the screen and enter webinar ID number shown on the screen when prompted. When called up to testify, state your full name and address for the record. I request from those providing testimony not to repeat testimony that has already been given to the agency, simply indicating you agree with the prior testimony given by a speaker you identify as sufficient. Each person will have three minutes to provide testimony. Thank you.
And Mayor, can I read the title of the resolution?
Oh, boy. Yes, please do. Thank you.
URA Resolution Number 353, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Wilsonville, adopting the budget, making appropriations, and declaring the intent to collect tax increment for fiscal year 2025-26.
Thank you. And now staff will present their report.
Thank you. My name is Keith Gock. I'm the city's Finance Director, and as Amanda noted, she gave a pretty good summary of this budget. This budget was also well-vetted or vetted through our Budget Committee process. So it is the Urban Renewal Budget Approval Resolution. And our Urban Renewal has two plans in a program here, displayed in columnar form, and then by row, listing the total resources and total requirements. The total budget is $9,429,791. And the main activity is the Twist Rebate Program, in the Wind Program, and the construction of Brown Road in the West Side Plan, and an additional capital project in the Coffee Creek is the Day Road Sewer Extension Project. So the budget for that is that $9.4 million. And that wraps up the presentation. Save for any questions.
Any questions, staff, by council?
Chair, I do have a question for Keith. Is the Brown Road the project that we've been talking about, the undergrounding of the utilities?
No, it's the whole project. Well...
Does it include that? Plus, it's the improvements?
Yeah, the EDA improvements.
Got it. Got it. Okay, thank you.
And it is the last project in the West Side.
Okay. Does any other member have any comments or discussion? Okay, hearing no further comments. I'm going to close, or testimony, I'm going to close the hearing at 10:54 PM.
Mayor, sorry, can we just make sure that we don't have anybody on Zoom?
I thought, okay. Okay, we have no one on Zoom. The hearing is closed at 10:55 PM now. It's now time for the agency members to consider Resolution Number 353. This is time for us to deliberate. Do you have any further deliberation on this? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 353?
I move to approve fiscal year 2025-2026 proposed budget for the Urban Renewal Agency in the amount of $9,429,791, and to levy the full division of tax amount for the Coffee Creek District and the Wind Twist Bioscience Project plans.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion's been made by Member Barry and seconded by Member Chevlin. Is there any to approve Resolution Number 353? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote. Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. The motion passes 5-0. And I hereby adjourn at 10:56 p.m.